Are not on the agenda. So if you wish to give input about reopening of schools or dates to reopen schools, or the school calendar, or the Open Public Meetings Act, or homework and grading, those are all topics that I will ask for input for later on. So this is input only for items not on the agenda. And I don't see any hands. So I'll give that one more try. No, okay. Um, so that was easy. Uh. Establishment of the regular agenda. Superintendent Thily, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
Okay. So the first item on our agenda is an update on reopening of schools and the required OSPI reopening progress report. And I want to be really clear because the, um, the draft of the report was attached to the agenda. And apparently we got some feedback that, gosh, all the dates are blank. They're not setting dates. And that's not the case. The case is that the board was going to use this opportunity to discuss what those dates should be. So I want everybody to be calm about that. And with that, I'm going to, Superintendent, do you have, um, do you want to start us off on this?
Sure, happy to do so. Thank you, President Weaver. Um, and yeah, thank you for that clarification on the template. And I do want to be clear to folks that I know that OSPI had requested the template be in by March 1st. We did do some checking. Um, we're going to be just fine submitting it on the 3rd. Actually shared that the, the plan was to have our board discuss, um, the dates that haven't already been set. You'll notice it, um, if people looked at the attached draft that was on the board packet. Of course, we do have our dates set, um, up through, um, 3rd grade. And so to those ends, I did want to just kind of talk about, um, what's been, um, happening on the reopening front. Um, first of all, before I dive into the, the K1 and, and the 2, 3 that we're excited about, I did just want to remind everybody, um, because it was a good reminder to me as, uh, we worked through the cabinet and I through the template. Um, our students, uh, many of our students with special needs have been receiving in-person services all the way back, starting in late September. Um, we've had a few hundred students who have been in our schools, um, receiving in-person services. Um, that includes, um, quite a few preschool age students, all the way up to our, um, Academy for Community Transition or ACT students, 18 to 21-year-olds, uh, again, students, um, with special needs. So, um, you know, I just never want to forget those folks because they've been out there working hard in person with students, doing a great job, and I might add, um, not adding to community spread of the virus and really implementing those protocols, those mitigation protocols, just doing an outstanding job. And I'm really proud of all those folks. Um, and then they got joined, um, on February 11th by our first group of general ed students coming in. These, uh, for hybrid in-person learning opportunity, our kindergarten through 1st grade. And I know we talked a lot about that at our last board meeting, so I won't, um, go on and on about it. But it, it sure is exciting to see those students. Um, and they, they're really thriving by, by my own observation, but more importantly, by the reports that I'm getting back from the schools as well. Um, that is going very well. That doesn't mean there's not some challenges, but going very, very well. And again, um, not causing, um, staff are not getting COVID and we're not getting, um, spread in the community. In fact, our COVID numbers continue to be on a pretty solid decline, uh, through all of this. And then we're very excited that this Thursday, we will be bringing in, um, our 2nd and 3rd graders for hybrid in-person option. And so, um, very excited about that. I know those students and those families who have chosen to come in person are, are getting very anxious and looking forward to it. Our teachers, our, our 2nd and 3rd grade teachers are busy preparing, um, and getting ready, uh, to welcome those students back. So whenever we can do that, you know, it's been a year, um, since COVID really hit our community and, um, with those first terrible deaths that we experienced at the Kirkland Nursing Home. And, you know, it's, it's hard to believe that a year has passed. But, um, I am excited that we, I feel, as again, I noted the, the numbers. If, if you're like me and you obsessively watch the, the King County COVID dashboard, you, you have a lot to be happy about over the last, um, six to eight weeks. It's been in steady decline. Um, numbers are, are really, um, in a place that we haven't seen in months. So that's very encouraging. And, um, so we're excited about that. I'm also, um, very pleased, uh, to, um, inform the board that the bargaining team with, um, the, our district bargaining team and IEA did reach a memorandum of understanding, uh, to serve high school students who are at risk. These are our 9th through 12th, first group coming back in would be 12th graders. And the process, I won't go into great detail, but we know those students that have had struggles academically, failing classes, seniors who might be in danger of failing, our, our building level counselors, administrators, and our, our MTSS teams, if you will, our tiered teams, will be looking and, um, identifying those students and providing them an in-person support option that would happen on Wednesdays. So we're, we're very happy about that. And, um, then another thing that's on the horizon is a fitness opportunity for our middle school students, which we're also very excited about, coming right after we move back into, um, daylight savings time, I believe, March 15th. Um, I think they're calling it Fitness with Friends. And, um, hundreds of middle school students are already signing up for that opportunity to come and, and do some fitness activities on campus. Um, and so, uh, our middle schools, you know, we haven't, we haven't provided a lot of opportunities for our middle schoolers. And, uh, we know that we intentionally focused on our youngest learners. And then we kind of pivoted to those high schoolers that, that are in, in need of support because we have a limited time with them. But overall, um, I'm excited to see these growing opportunities for our students, not just academic opportunities, but also some additional, um, fitness opportunities that will also help address that social emotional wellbeing of our students. I would say, you know, we've learned a lot about the virus and how we might manage or mitigate the impacts that the virus is having, in particular, how it relates to how we might set up hybrid and in-person learning opportunities. Um, I, I do have to, uh, give thanks to our bargaining group, um, our district bargaining group and our employee bargaining groups. And, uh, that, of, of all of our employee groups, but most recently with Isqyah Education Association, and we've been kind of on this learning journey together. I think we're all getting smarter about how to, um, operate schools in this vi- this pandemic virus setting, um, particularly that it seems to be improving. And again, a lot to be optimistic about. We heard the announcement from President Biden today and then followed by Governor Inslee to prioritize educators now for vaccines. So as the community knows and the board knows, we have a vaccine center just waiting for doses over there. As soon as they come, we are ready to start doing, um, uh, really large-scale vaccination. I know I'm personally looking forward to that day as well. Um, we have been, um, I know we talked about this at the last meeting. We have been in communication with other districts that are further, um, down the road than us in having students return for hybrid options. And that's been very helpful. I'm grateful to my peers and colleagues who have invited and allowed us to come in and observe and appreciative of those staff members who have taken advantage of those opportunities. Um, one very promising approach that we've seen working in districts, um, with students learning in person, um, i- in a hybrid model with, is with the teacher live streaming to their class. Um, some in person, some of your students, your class would be there in person, while the others would be still in the remote setting. So the class, there's some real advantages to that approach. And it's something that, um, I know our bargaining teams are talking about um, as we contemplate the return of our 4th and 5th graders, hopefully coming, um, back, um, by the 25th of March. That would be three weeks from, uh, this Thursday. That would be in keeping kind of with our, our, uh, our K3 MOU language with the three-week gap in there. And, um, so I know there's some discussions about how we might be able to, um, utilize live streaming, um, certainly at the 6th through 12th level. And I know we're going to be having more robust conversation about that as we talk about template and everything as well. But I am definitely encouraged by that. Um, and then I, I guess lastly, I would just say, you know, we've learned a lot, we on the, the management side of this, but I know our teachers have as well. They've, you know, so many of them had to master learning management systems and this, uh, this way of teaching that none of them really ever wanted i- in a remote world. But I have so much faith in their ability as well to take that knowledge and, and pivot that because I know they're great in-person teachers and combine their ability to be in-person teachers and remote teachers. And, and I recognize it's challenging. I'm not saying it's easy by any stretch of the imagination. But, um, you know, as I have talked with students now, young students, and I've talked with, um, personal friends that I, uh, are teaching in-person in neighboring districts, I have to say the one consistent theme that I hear is just, once you get past the apprehension, just how, uh, powerful it is, um, not just for the student, the teachers as well. My friends are like, you know, I was nervous about this. And, um, I did it. I got through that nervousness. And what got me through the nervousness was the students and just the energy and joy that they brought. And that's not to say it hasn't been a little in those places where, when the students come back, it's not a little bit clunky at first because a lot of these kids have not had a lot of social interaction for the last year. So, but what I, what I'm being told and what we're observing is that it, it, as it kind of warms up, um, that, um, it starts to feel good again. And even though we have to be six foot of physical distancing and we're wearing masks and we're constantly washing our hands and doing all the things that we need to do to mitigate against the virus or the spread of the virus, um, they're doing. And it, it has a, uh, it, it has a powerful effect on people. And so, because some have said to me, well, if you're only able to do this hybrid thing, is it really worth all of that? And, and I would argue for those families and, and, uh, uh, we know that a large percentage, uh, majority of our secondary, um, students and families are, are, um, desire to be in-person. Um, I, I absolutely think it's worth the effort, um, to try to make that happen to whatever degree we can make happen so we can kind of reestablish ourselves as an in-person school district and, um, better serve the needs of those students that, that just desperately. I mean, I don't need to tell the board, you get all the same emails that I do. Um, I'll tell you, um, when I hear from students and, and they share with me some of the challenges they're facing, uh, at times it's really heartbreaking and it just makes me want to work even harder to try to give them that option, um, that they need. And, um, plus having them in our schools, um, when we can look in the eyes of individuals and hear the tones in their voices. Um, sometimes, you know, as a former classroom teacher and building administrator, I will tell you, um, a lot of times, you know, you ask an adolescent, and I was a middle school person, how are you doing? And the way they might say fine was an indicator that they weren't doing fine. And then I knew that we needed to get, get some support in there. Well, that's really challenging to do in a remote setting. And so again, I'm very, um, I'm optimistic that we can make this happen. We still have, uh, four months of school left, over a quarter of the school year is left. So I think it is very worthwhile for us to continue to work with our IEA partners and our partners of our other labor groups, um, because I believe we can make this happen for our students, especially when I see these numbers going the way they are. And I'm encouraged, um, my hope is we're going to have more vaccine coming and we're all going to have an opportunity to be vaccinated, those of us that it's appropriate for. Um, I would certainly encourage us all to do it, um, if it's appropriate. And, um, get, get our system back to the system that we know and love. Um, again, it's hard to believe that it's been almost 12 months, uh, since we were forced, uh, into closure by the governor. Um, and a lot of hard work has happened in between now and then. So that was kind of my big overview, President Weaver. I know that there's probably lots of questions. And, um, then obviously we're going to want to take a look at the template and start talking about those dates as well beyond for our 4th through 12th grade students. Um, the one comment I will make, um, and I did write it in on the, um, the template that we attached to the board packet, it's the column that asks, when do you plan to return to, uh, full? I, I did take a little license there and I put the date 8/31, knowing that the calendar for next year has not been approved yet, but I knew what the draft said. And then I, my notation, of course, was, and when your six-foot rule is, um, when we are released from the six-foot rule. Because as I've said here before, six foot of physical distance equals hybrid. So if you want full-time in-person, I'm not hardly aware of a school system anywhere in the state that can do that with the six-foot rule. So we, we need to have, continue to have a conversation about that as well. And then I know the team is here and, um, has question, i- is ready for, uh, to take any questions and stuff the board has as well.
Okay, so I think at this point, we normally do public input before board conversation. So, um, I'm going to keep this brief, like to 10 minutes. So, um, I may not call on you, but you can always, um, send us email. Um, we get lots of email. Uh, so please keep your comments to two minutes. Clearly state your name and attendance area. The board does not respond to public input. It's not a two-way street. Um, so make your comments and we will thank you. Um, please keep your comments civil, respectful. Do not call out specific individuals. And I'll just remind you that this is a school district, uh, one of whose central values is our culture of kindness. So, um, I ask that you remember that when you give your public input. And with that, um, Linda Louise.
Oh, hi, my name is Linda Lewis. Um, I have, um, just a few questions. Um, one comment I'd like to make, my mother is 96. She got COVID two weeks ago, was mopping her floor the second week. She is doing cooking, cleaning and everything. Actually, my whole family has had, um, COVID on. They live close to the Canadian border. All of them have had it and they're doing fine. So another question I have, why are the younger children able to go to school and the high schoolers not? What, it makes their education more important than the high schoolers? I would like to see at least two days in school and three days at home if possible. Is that an option?
Oh. The board's not going to respond, so.
Oh, okay, thank you. Thank you for listening. Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, okay, our, uh, uh, next person is Kelly Stone.
Hi. Can you hear me? Sorry.
No, that's okay.
Yes. Um, uh, I have, I've spoken before, I have, uh, two kids. I have a 3rd grader who's going back to school on Thursday and we're so excited for that. And I have an 8th grader who's 13, um, at Maywood Middle School. And she wrote a statement that she wanted me to read tonight. She is thankfully at her, um, sports practice. And so that she has gotten wind of this sort of idea that, uh, maybe it isn't worth it for the upper kids to go back to school this year because there's not that much time left, um, which is upsetting for her. So I promised her I would try not to cry while I read her statement. But, um, she says, "School used to be a getaway place, a sanctuary of learning, socializing and being part of something. Online school is surely not the same. Sitting at home in your room, looking at a screen, isn't socializing. It isn't the middle school experience. When I first heard school was remote for my 8th grade year, my heart sunk to the floor. I tried to convince myself it would be okay and we would be back in school soon. Tears slipped down my face while the weeks flew by, it flew by me with assignments, essays and readings. It's unbearable. ISD and my family had a bond. I knew the board was good like superheroes, but every day I'm at home, they feel more like villains. In my house, I'm in my house almost 24/7, eating, walking and talking isn't sure. All the days are a blur. There are no more weird or crazy days at school. In, in December, I had to go to Seattle Children's Hospital Psych Ward for a week because I was so upset at being home all the time. There's no more at school and every day makes me feel more isolated. I know I'm not the only one who knows that. I'm not a spreader, I'm a student." It took a lot of courage for my daughter to write that. And I want you to know that even being back in school for eight or 10 weeks on a hybrid schedule would mean a lot to a kid like that who was formerly a very happy, well-adjusted kid. Um, so I, I really urge you to work as hard as you can with the union to get these upper-level students back in school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, next speaker, Catherine Swanberg. Catherine, are you there?
Yep, I'm trying to unmute.
Oh, we can hear you. Yeah, oh, there you are.
Good evening, my name is Catherine Swanberg. I have two kids in Isqyah Schools, a 3rd grader and a 6th grader. There should be nothing more essential on your agenda than providing in-person options for every single kid who wants one in this school district immediately. You have had one year to solve this problem. Your urgency is not evident to me or many people in this community. Your number one job is to advocate for the best interest of our kids and you are not doing your job. We are currently 47th in the nation for the number of kids receiving in-person instruction. It is unacceptable. The only good news about that statistic is that there is plenty of evidence and science over the previous five months around our country that proves we can offer safe, in-person learning for the families who want it. We are not treading on unknown territory anymore. School districts all over the country are figuring it out, improving that daily. Why aren't you? 83% of your teachers have voted to return to in-person learning. I am begging you to get it done. Figure it out. There should simply not be a higher priority.
Thank you very much. Um, next we have Kathy Arneson. Kathy? Oh, there you are.
Hi. And of course, you caught me just as I'm getting in the car to take a child somewhere because I am so grateful for the chance to take a child somewhere. I have, um, a 10th grader at Skyline, 8th and 7th graders at Pine Lake Middle School, and a 2nd grader who is counting the days until she gets to go back to Creekside Elementary. I am so grateful that my 2nd grader gets to go back. However, I am far more concerned about my 10th, 8th and 7th graders than my 2nd grader for many reasons, and you have heard a lot of them, the mental health, the social, the emotional. Um, so I'm not going to rehash that. But I will tell you, I'm also concerned about the idea that if these kids don't go back until the fall, I have an incoming high school student, a 9th grader, who will not have set foot on a campus in 18 months. So his last experience at school was learning to navigate middle school hallways. He had 18 months at a middle school. And if we are not back in school until fall, then he goes to that high school having had 18 months away from a school. And now he has to navigate high school hallways. I have a 10th grader who has got to learn how to independently manage social situations and manage getting around a high school that she went to for six months before it shut down. She has got to learn these independent skills. Way more important for her to learn them before she goes off and tries to manage a college campus than for my 2nd grader, who her level of independence that she needs to learn is much smaller at her age than my 10th grader. I am very concerned about a 7th grader going into 8th grade next year at a school where two-thirds of the kids have never set foot on the campus. And she is in a position where she will be expected to be a leader and a helper to those 6th and 7th graders who have never been on that middle school campus. I love the Pine Lake School and the work they have done to have those.
You're at two minutes, if you can wrap.
Absolutely. Please get them in school as soon as possible. They need to learn how to navigate school.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, I'm going to grab just one more speaker. I know there are more of you, um, but we need to get onto the board discussion. So please feel free to email us your comments. Um, and the last one is Emily Melo Brum. Do I need to unmute you? Maybe.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, awesome. Um, thank you for taking this. I'm a 4th grade teacher in the district. I am not here to say whether or not we should go back in person or not. I'm one of the 83% of the teachers that supported that. Um, however, I have a lot of questions and I know you won't respond, but here we go. If there isn't enough room in the hybrid classrooms to match requests, how will the district decide who gets the spot? Where is the equity? Um, if efforts, if, what efforts, if any, are being made to prioritize the return of the students furthest away from educational justice? Um, I believe that those students, the students experiencing homelessness or students who are at risk of not graduating, or students with disabilities, or students who are not engaging in the remote learning, those are the students that should be the heart of every decision that we've made. And I'm so embarrassed that our school district hasn't gotten those students back. That was what Rick Dill said and that's what everyone said last summer. And my heart just breaks because we're supposed to be a district with equity. And those kids, oh my goodness. And if we assume that in-person learning is a higher quality education, how can we assure that students with, um, IEPs are the ones that are returning or students that don't have their basic needs being met? Because I doubt, there's many parents here who are in a position where their basic needs aren't being met that are able to show up here and advocate for themselves. So I am trying to advocate for those in our district that are the most vulnerable, that should be at the forefront of every conversation forever since forever. Um, I would also, um, y- you said something about a March 25th start date. And I'm like, okay, but no negotiated agreement yet. Interviews for HR haven't started, right? Like, don't know what my position is going to be. Um, other districts have figured this out already and we haven't. Um, and I think a large problem with that is because we have been focusing on the loudest, as in the bans of education, the youngest students getting back first. And I don't believe that's correct. We should be focusing on equity. And I agree that our high school and middle school students are at much greater risk for social.
Okay, you're at two minutes.
Okay. Okay, this is a 4th grade teacher. Lots of props, lots of special days. I'm just saying, there's ways to make remote exciting.
Okay, thank you very much for your input. Um, okay, so I am going to now. Oops. Oh, um, I'm going to now open it up to board conversation. Um.
I just, just before I actually start the dialogue, um, can we ask the superintendent to, uh, provide us some preliminary data for the secondary survey for return? And why I ask that is I think that helps us, inform us for what our approach is. Like, our job as five school directors that are elected by this community is to represent the will of the community as best we can. And, you know, when, for our elementary K3 return, at least, it was pretty close, like 52, 48. That's about as close as you're going to get. So there wasn't necessarily a mandate to push. And I think that's why versus Mercer Island, when it was 75, 25, there's a reason why Mercer Island is back in school and further along the process than we are. So I guess I would like to hear what the secondary results are, either by building or grade level or how everyone are presented to us before we actually have discussion because that may.
Yeah. No, uh, thank you, Director Gallinger. I, you're, I should have, I should have noted that in my opening remarks. We do have our, the results of our survey back of our secondary, um, students and families. And, uh, it's, it's actually quite remarkable because, um, uh, you, you were correct. We were closer to that kind of 50/50 at the elementary. But, um, we also had tremendous variability, you'll recall, between buildings. We had, uh, about a 40-point spread depending on, uh, the buildings. We did not see that at the secondary. In fact, what we saw at the secondary was amazingly consistent. Um, and I haven't had a tremendous amount of time with the data, but I have looked at it. Hundreds and hundreds of students took the survey. That's encouraging. It's a, it's a very good sample set. Um, but the spread, like at the high school, was like two percentage points. And it really, um, sits at about 74%, I believe, wanting in, in-person experience. And not hardly any variation, whether you're talking about, um, Liberty or Skyline, Isqyah, Gibson Act. It was just amazingly consistent. Very similar among our five middle schools as well. Same kinds of numbers up in that mid 70s, like 73, 74% responding that they want an in-person option. Responding that they want an in-person option. Um, so, and breaking down about twenty-six percent, um, saying they want to stay fully remote. And again, very consistent among each of the schools. So that was a little surprising to me. Um, just the amount of consistency that we saw amongst secondary. I, I won't say I was that surprised based on all the input that we have received and I have received from secondary families since the beginning of this pandemic. Um, I think it just, uh, drives home the point that for many, three-quarters of the families in our district. They are wanting that choice for their child. And we know that because many of them, their, the child is just really struggling with remote learning. And again, it's not because the teachers aren't working hard and doing, trying to do their very best, for sure. It's just an environment that doesn't work for everybody. And I think I've said here publicly before. I can't imagine it working for an adolescent Ron Thiele back when I was that age either. So I, I can empathize with our students who, um, desperately want to experience an in-person opportunity. So, yeah, very different results than we experienced in our elementaries. Um, and so I'm encouraged by that. I, that, that our community is telling us. Um, we want that opportunity to get our students back in person.
Thank you, Superintendent. So I guess this is for President Weaver. Have, are you going to have us break up our conversation into sort of questions about K three? And then four twelve or all of the above? I didn't, I didn't want to, I have questions about both, so I wanted to follow your.
Okay, um. I was actually sort of focused on, um, filling out the survey, but, um, I would say go ahead and ask your question. We can start with three if you want.
Okay, um, so I brought up the question at the last meeting asking about sort of what was the impact when we broke it down and desagreed the data for who decided to return and who didn't for K three? And thank you for providing that information to us today. So my question for staff is, it looks very clearly like our families uh, who are Asian are reluctant to return and it seems to be very consistent across at least the early grades. So it's a two-part question. One, does four, five and six, twelve look similar, which you may not know the answer to that. But two, more importantly, as we look towards next year, and not that we're giving up at all in this year. But we need to also start planning for next year. What are we doing to make sure that we are meeting the needs of our Asian families from a communication standpoint? So they understand all the risk mitigation that has been done. As well as what opportunities are for in-person and what that means. Like hybrid may even be a different, difficult word to translate. I don't know any of those things, but that would be information that based on the data raises a lot of questions for me. And then certainly other board members can go, but President Weaver, please call me again about, I have, I have a special education question after.
Uh, yes, so I can, um, I can start speaking to that. And if there's any other, um, cabinet members that want to jump in, that's, uh, that's fine as well. So we've, uh, just recently received the, the data, um, kind of break, broken down by race. And so, uh, one of the things that, uh, the Equity Department has planned is, uh, next Monday to talk to some, uh, members of our Chinese community to get feedback um, from them as to, um, why they're picking the remote option versus the in-person option. And also just getting feedback on, you know, are there things that, um, as a district, we could be, um, highlighting? Um, as, um, they begin to think, um, as families about returning to in-person learning. I know, I don't want to speak, um, on behalf of, of all of our, uh, Asian families by any means. But I know information that are, that the Equity Department has received so far is that, um, many of our Asian families live in multi-generational homes. And so prior to getting the vaccine, there's a, there was a lot of fear about, um, having their students return in person. And so, um, some of the information I've been getting is that as the vaccines ramp up, the more comfortable they will feel, um, uh, returning in person. I also know that, uh, uh, many of our Asian families are still, um, maybe still have family members that, that live in, uh, China or India or Taiwan. And just listening to, or like visually seeing the difference in how, um, those other countries responded to COVID versus America, um, created some apprehension and, um, nervousness for them. Just, um, seeing the difference in, um, in response. And so I think, uh, that'll be, you know, we'll have to continue to, um, to speak to that. I know, um, the other thing I wanted to say was just, the Equity Department has partnered uh, with the Communication Department, um, and, and supporting schools and making sure that, uh, the hybrid handbooks, um, or other videos, uh, that buildings were creating, right? Welcoming students back to school, um, were, were translated and, um, a- and information was per, um, provided in the family's preferred language. Uh, we even, um, provided scripts for like when buildings send out e-newses for how families can, um, like in their preferred language, how they can, uh, translate the information if this may be their first time doing so. And then our, uh, I know the Communications Department and the Family Partnership Liaisons from the Equity Department also provided, uh, targeted robocalls in preferred languages, um, to alert families that information was coming out or had been sent out and, and to look there. But I really think now, um, now that we have the data and we, we, you know, um, we just recently got it to be able to now set up some of our own, uh, networking to try to figure out what some of the, the barriers are and we'll work with I S F as well, um, to do that. So tho- those were some of the things that I've heard. And, um, like I said, setting up some, um, parent sessions. We also have a, a, a black parent group. And so just talking to our different parent groups to get their feedback to see, um, it, what if anything we can be doing to help, um, uh, them feel comfortable about returning to in-person.
Thank you. Cause certain grade bands, I saw our Hispanic families also lagged beyond, uh, what the average was.
Correct.
I, I noticed that it, that wasn't as consistent, but you're, um, as seen the, the Asian population. I thought it was interesting in kindergarten. In fact, every other group was, um, above the district average. So we definitely have some work, um, to do. I, I was heartened by some of the data where I saw some of our, our African-American families and Hispanic families were, they're sending their children at rates comparable to or even above the average. But, um, I really appreciate, Elena, it's funny because Elena and I had this conversation earlier today. Um, um, kind of trying to problem solve what's, you know, how we might approach, um, our Asian community and build confidence in them, uh, because I believe they should be confident that our schools are safe and that they can, um, send their children in. And, um, I will say that, that, that data is similar in our neighboring districts as well. I was able to ask some of my neighboring colleagues, um, what they're experiencing. So it's kind of a regional thing that I think we, we need to tackle a little bit too. But again, I just want to say, um, the staff and everybody is working really hard to mitigate. And I absolutely believe that the, uh, the schools are a safe place and I would encourage them. Um, we'll, we'll try to get as much information out and reassure people as much as we can. That's not to say it's perfect and that there will be cases of COVID. But when we have had cases of COVID, we have been able to manage those very, very well and, and mitigate the outcome. And not lead to, uh, spread throughout the school or certainly not in the community. So thank you, Elena, for that outreach because I think that's going to be critical to hear from those communities themselves too. About what is it that they want to hear from us or need from us to build that confidence?
Thank you. And I think the data also shows that this is why it's critical that we have a district-wide survey through whatever platform we can to find out sort of what is family's intent next September.
I also wanted to add on the front of communications and some of those regards. Something that we're doing in this next coming week after our second and third grade students are back in is next week we plan to, um, run two separate thought exchanges. Um, one will be for those, um, parents and families who are back in person. Um, K through three, um, and kind of sharing out about what their experience has been and what's top of mind for them. And we'd also like to do a separate exchange for those families who have chosen to keep their students in remote. And to answer your question, Harlan, I think what we're hoping for on that remote side of the thought exchange are what are some of those ongoing concerns, um, and reasons that parents might have for remaining at home? Um, and so Elena and I have also talked about, uh, connecting, um, her equity work within that exchange as well. So, so that's a way that we're going to continue to try to gather some feedback around some of those topics and concerns as well.
Anyone else?
Uh, yeah, I have one thing that's maybe before we get into the specifics that I want to go back to, but I'm going to need some help because I am, uh, not able to find it in my own email. And that is, I'd like to just go through a bit of a restatement of what our plan of record was. Which is, we said from the beginning that we were going to focus on those students furthest from, um, educational justice. And I feel there's become a bit of a talk track that we haven't done that, which I think is inaccurate. So I'm not sure who would have it. I literally just can't put my hands on it. But we went through the process of defining who that was, which is our youngest learners, those who can't read. We've worked on bringing them back, which is some of our, um, our students that, um, may need spe- other special supports. But I think it's just worth bearing if someone can put their hands on definitionally, what did we say we were going to do? And let's be real clear that that's what we've done because I think that's just an inaccurate, um, talk track. Yes, there's a lot of energy and I, more than anyone else, supports working on every kid in every grade level with an in-person opportunity and I won't let that go. But I, I really feel like I can't let Stan that we haven't done what we said we were going to do. And what was the appropriate thing to do was to make sure we focused on those furthest from educational justice. So if I could just get a little help on that, um, resolution, I found like eighty-six other resolutions, um, on what that language was. And let's just be real precise about that because I think we need to put that to bed.
I'm going to have to dig around and try to find that.
But we can come, we can come back to that, but that's one I just feel like we, we need to stay, we need to be super clear about and that this board has been really clear about who we were going to serve and where we were going to focus first and have taken those exact steps every time.
And I'll just add, I, I mean, I think you're, you're completely right. And I think some of the issue that gets into, into this is that other people have other definitions of what would have been furthest from educational justice. And so to some, we should have started with high school students and that, that's fine. That can be their thought. But that is not what we said we would do because we said we were going to start with the youngest learners and that is exactly what we've done. So I think that is another nuance to the issue out there as far as people, some people feeling we haven't done what we said. The, the overall, you know, reaching kids furthest from educational equity. Well, I agree that, you know, we've gone through and done the steps that we outlined and said we would do.
Well, and youngest learners was part of that, um, decision tree or framework.
Absolutely right.
Calling it.
The framework, yeah.
The inability to read.
Why did you start there?
Correct.
Because they said to, but we also brought in, I mean, earlier than that, we brought in preschool and L R C two. And, um, you know, and then we shifted over to the, uh, McKinney Vento and the kids at risk of failing. And, you know, so we've done a lot of that.
Yeah, so I, I just, we'll go through a bit of a restatement of that when we can get our hands on it. But be clear that we said it is the youngest learners because the inability to self-navigate and to read is a dramatic barrier to participation, participating in remote learning. And therefore that is why there's a difference. Are, do we have kids across the entire spectrum suffering? Absolutely, a hundred percent. And again, I will say I support having every grade an opportunity to be in class and I, I will work on that until we're done. But I, I just, that message is just troublesome to me that we keep going back to, why didn't they focus on who was furthest? We set a definition and that's exactly where we focused.
I would agree, Director Mullins, like we, we defined it even in our resolution, what, what we defined as furthest from educational justice, which was consistent with what state definition were. But again, this is, uh, applauding our superintendent and his team for, again, people can go ahead and be frustrated with the district, but they need to be frustrated with us. Like, he's, he and his team's only been doing what we have asked them to do, which was to pursue, again, based on their recommendation. But they also believed the most disproportionately impacted by remote learning, which is our youngest learners. So, um, it's not ever been that we were casting aside or setting aside or marginalizing other populations. Uh, but if we have to choose a priority group, that's where we landed, which is consistent with what everyone else uh, in the state and country has recommended and it aligned with what the science for COVID nineteen was, which was a really, really important thing.
Well, I think I'd also like to dispel the myth that we're not working hard to get kids back. I, I, I don't think that we have come to a board meeting and said, I'm fine, take whatever time it is. And the kids are fine. I, I think that this board has not stated that. And so we are working as hard as we can. We, um, you know, we have all the information that we have in front of us and we're, we're pursuing things the way that the system allows us to pursue it with as much of a push. And the, and the staff would tell you, if they, if they're all online, they would start nodding their heads and saying, yes, we are feeling a lot of push from the board. So I do want to dispel this, that this isn't easy, but this board did not back down. And when you look up and down the I five corridor, there are not a lot of schools that are back, um, in session. So I do, I'm thankful that I have colleagues that we have come to a consensus about getting kids back to school.
And I would add to that, and I agree with you that the board is all on the same page of getting kids back. But we get email that says, you're incompetent because you're not getting kids back fast enough. We also get email that says, you're irresponsible because you're trying to get kids back too fast. So the community does not speak with one voice. I think the board for the most part does. But I do want to just bring that up because, um, it's not like we have a vast community that's saying kids must be back in school. There are any number of people who are quite concerned about the push to reopen and we need a balance there.
Well, and then if we're also going to be on this topic, the idea that, you know, for some, we're being hammered over, oh, you're just listening to the loudest voice. Well, I will say we've been listening to our voice and our values. And we have said from the beginning that the most important thing is to get in-person educational opportunities for all of our students. And yes, we had to step through doing one group at a time. But we now will have our K one in, our two, three is going in so soon. I have great hopes for our four, five to be in, um, by like around March twenty-fifth. I have high hopes to get our six, twelve in. And that's where we need to talk next about the dates that we would like to establish as our targets that we will put in the reopening, um, progress report. Um, but I, I think we have all been clear that we're all committed to getting kids an in-person option as soon as possible.
Yes, and but before we talk about those dates, uh, can we circle back? I, my other question was about special education and that will help inform this conversation for me at least is, uh, the superintendent provided data to us today about how, uh, I'll use my value judgment. Few special education students are being served in middle, in our middle and high schools. And when I see it's less than one percent, when we have eight percent of our students that are special education identified, uh, that, that brings up a huge equity concern and then just the disproportional impact. So my first question is, of the students or families that were offered special education services, how many, what percentage return versus declined? And how has that changed over time since they were the first group to return in September? And two, what are we really doing? Cause we've heard from staff, we've heard from families about our L R C one students in particular. Uh, how are we serving them in the interim, especially for grades, middle school and high school?
Yes. Oh, do I need to unmute? I'm so sorry. I should pay more attention. Okay.
Thank you. Can you hear me? So to answer your first question, when we talked about bringing back the L R C two E C E kindergarten through ACT program students in the fall, it was about a sixty, forty split, pretty much. It was about a sixty, forty split, pretty much around there between all those groups. A sixty percent requesting to return in person, forty percent requesting a full remote assignment. And honestly, that hasn't changed. It changed a lot in the two weeks before we went live, but it hasn't changed much since then. With a very small number, like a single-digit number, asking to go to full remote. With our recent change in stretching the LRC two program to the three-point-five-hour day, we were anticipating some more returns. But they haven't percolated up to my desk. So then can I jump to your second question? Harlan, is that all right? Okay. So for students with disabilities at the secondary level, there are two measures of student achievement. One is their standard grades and report cards, so high school semester grades and middle school trimester grades. And the second measure is the individual student's IP progress monitoring of each student's goals. And progress monitoring reports go out the same schedule to families and students as report cards. I think some of the students served in LRC one programs are doing okay in remote learning, and I think some are really struggling. Remote learning presents the same challenges of engagement and screen exhaustion. And honestly, is amplified for students with organizational struggles. To answer your specific question of how do we know how they're doing? I think the special education teachers are well aware of the struggles of their students and continue to seek new and different support options. Pandemic learning is hard. Things take longer, students are missing their peers and teachers aren't as able to connect and build capital with students to leverage those relationships and gently push students in their learning. As we look to bring more students back for in-person learning, the special services team will learn what, use what we already learned through the other programs who have been in since the fall to see those potential potholes and avoid them, or at least be able to talk through with parents. So how do we know how they're doing? Their teachers know how they're doing. Some of them are mightily struggling and some of them are doing okay. The progress monitoring report, reports that the students this semester, high school students this semester largely did better, as well or better as the students did last first semester. So last year comparatively in their special education classes, but did less well in their general education classes.
A sense on, is there a barrier of communication or culture or expectations for their return, meaning the sixty, forty split? Is that something that you would have expected? Or are you surprised that it hasn't changed over the course of the past six months? I'm just curious as far as how, because I don't, I don't know that world. I don't know how we're communicating to families and saying, here's how we can serve your needs, here's, here's what we're offering.
Sure. I feel confident in the communication, because every single family in the LRC two program had to state a choice. Nobody just fell into one way or the other, so we had to have a discussion. They had to have an IP meeting and then they wrap that up in a prior written notice in their home language to say, this is what we decided in our meeting. So I feel confident in the communication and I was not surprised at the number, because the, the element of students who themselves are medically fragile in the LRC two population is real. And so as a family, their decision to avail themselves of remote learning was the safest choice. And to be honest, continues to be the safest choice. I think there might be, I don't know, six or seven students who have been making noise about wanting to come back to school. But in a population of two hundred, that's not a large degree. So I think everyone is pretty comfortable in their decision right now. And I haven't had a big push to either have more students go remote or more students come in person. Preschool is a different story. The ECE program, we continue to have people turning three. And we continue to have three-year-olds coming to school. So the preschool programs are full. That we, we, we could use another preschool teacher right now and the preschool programs are full. And the students who elected to stay remote in preschool are still remote and they seem to be happy there. But the new families that are coming, they're coming in person.
Thank you for that information.
Okay, anything else before we go to the.
Suzanne, if I could just share.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The amazing Ms. Gamberry found the resolution from November twelfth, resolution eleven fifty-seven. And boy, y'all did a pretty good job of remembering what you, what you wrote. Because it reads that you're furthest away from educational equity includes those students who are not yet able to read. That would be our youngest learners, preschool, kindergarten, first grade. And it also includes ECE, LRC one, LRC two, ELL students experiencing and students experiencing homelessness, students with an IEP or a five oh four accommodation. So those were, we pretty much covered most of those groups. Most of them are getting some option for an in-person. There are a few that are not yet at this time. We just heard Dr. Gallager and Dr. Bailey talking about our LRC one students. Our, some of our ELL students have yet, not yet had an in-person opportunity, some students with five oh four plans. For me, the way that we, the quickest and fastest way for us to get this next batch is to provide an in-person option for everybody who wants one. I just want to go on the record and say that. And since I do have, I had my hand up, President Weaver, I really appreciated the conversation around. We can't make everybody happy. In fact, I came to the conclusion pretty early on, I probably can't make anybody happy. So then what do you have? You have your core values. And I believe that this board and that this administrative team have landed on our core values. And we've made it clear that we believe an in-person option is critical for so many reasons and for so many students. So we're gonna continue to push on that. I, I believe that, yes, we, we, for those families that want remote, we need to try to have the best remote option that we can for them as well. But again, acknowledging we can't be all things to all people. So the reality is, as you said, President Weaver, the board hears from all sides. One side may be more organized at one time and then the next week it's another group that's organized, coming, coming at us, i- if you will. But I think we have remained steadfast in our desire to provide the best experience possible while continuing to live up to the resolution eleven fifty-seven, which clearly says, we need to be working to get kids in person. And I agree with it and that's what we're gonna do. Thank you.
Thanks, Diane.
Okay, where do we go from here?
So if we need to fill out this reopening report, do you want one of us to put it up?
I'm prepared to do that if you'd like.
Okay.
Well, maybe there should be some dialogue on the board before we put it up. I guess, I'll just lead off with four, five. I think four, five is a different place than six, twelve. I think, based on what I've heard from your report. So can you give us any more of a, than a feel of like? We, we've heard very clearly from lots of stakeholders in, in, in the community that setting dates is problematic or can be challenging. At the same time, we, we do believe that it, it does provide a roadmap. And so it's that delicate balance. But in four, five in particular, it seems to be most similar to K three than to six, twelve. Can you provide us any insight into, into that that will help, I think, shape our conversation?
Well, I'm, I know that some of the team, the bargaining team may want to weigh in. But, you know, I made the statement in my opening remarks of March twenty-fifth. I know the teacher commented on that. That is simply me projecting the K three MOU forward and recognizing the three-week gap. I mean, that is, I, I want to be clear, that's, there's no agreement on that. But I'm just following what I believe is, is a logical progression. So if we are bringing back our two, three, this Thursday, the fourth, you go three weeks out from that. And then you're on the March twenty-fifth. And again, one of those situations where there are four or five families probably going, wow, three more weeks that we have to wait. And then there are some who may be feeling, oh, this is terrible, why are you forcing this to happen? But I think it's reasonable. I know the bargaining teams are, are talking about four, five right now. And having what I understand to be very good fruitful conversations. You know, it's normal that there are lots of questions that folks would have. But I, I believe that this is something we can get done, Dr. Gallager. And again, it may look different for five, just because it, well, one, they're older, more mature students. It can be different, just like it can be for secondary students. And then that also helps us to address some of the staffing challenges that come about. I know we talked about this with the K three, but for, it's, it's not simple to take a class of twenty-two students and then have to condense that class to an in-person class that can only have fourteen students. And then having to, so you can see where it creates, you need about thirty percent more teachers. Now, in the, in the K one world, we were frankly quite a bit overstaffed due to our declining enrollment that we had. So we were actually overstaffed by, Mr. Cooper would have to correct me, but it was like as many as eighteen teachers in that. So we didn't, we had to go get some teachers, but not a mass number. We were not overstaffed like that in the upper grades, so the impact would be much greater. But I do, as I said, I think that there is a real opportunity with a live streaming model to make it work and have it be less disruptive to the overall system. That's what my opinion. I know that the, the team has been talking about that. I don't want to go too deep into the bargaining discussions. But from my understanding, that's where we're at. So I think it's very reasonable to think that our four, five would be in. And, and I, I would note the three-week gap, I think, makes sense when you're talking about the same building. I would advocate that you don't need a three-week gap between your four, five and an elementary school and your middle or high schoolers in completely different buildings.
Right. I mean, the reason why, and the thirty-one days came from me way back in the fall when we didn't know as much. Obviously, the CDC has updated their guidance and said that, gosh, at ten days is kind of where it ends. So then I would then say, professionally speaking, fourteen days would be a better gap. But to your point, like, I don't understand why middle school couldn't start at the same time as four, five, since we're talking about different buildings and everything we're doing is about mitigating risk. So I guess I would propose to the board, as we talk about dates, what is the barrier between us saying similar dates to four, five with six, eight? Or I, I know in the last meeting, we talked about maybe sixth and ninth graders being ahead of the other grades, because they've never been in the buildings before, been a middle or high school respectively. So maybe there's some consideration for what we would recommend sixth graders going on versus seventh and eighth. Except my hesitation with that is, I don't want the bargaining team to then be like, gosh, no, we're gonna hold to the farthest date rather than the closest date. And we've seen that happen time and again over the past several months.
Yeah, and I just want to be really clear that we're not just talking about, oh, the board is gonna go throw out a bunch of arbitrary dates. We're being asked to fill out this form and we're trying to give it our best shot, knowing that the bargains aren't complete. But at the same time, there was a lot of upfront work in the K three MOU that we don't have to reinvent the wheel on these others. And I did also want to point out that there's work going on simultaneously, not at the bargaining table. But while the bargaining table is doing one thing, we have subgroups of people working on other things. So it's not like before we were going, okay, it's K one, now it's two, three. We're doing a lot more things at the same time. So there's the hope that this can move a whole lot faster. And I think it was Sydney and then Ann. And then Marty.
Yes, so I guess for me, I just wanted to maybe, you know, I'm all about saying the words unsaid. So I just want to be clear, like, why is there a lag at all? And when we talk about in the elementary, and Harlan kind of got there, which is same building, more students. We do have a, from a risk mitigation perspective, we do have a responsibility to demonstrate for a period of time that we, we don't see an uptick in spread. And so I just think it's important to say that out loud, because that may be unclear. And so, yes, could it be shorter? I will always say yes. But I think it is important to say that pieces, as we step through this, we, we have a responsibility. I believe we have a responsibility, as does the guidance, to be able to demonstrate that we're, we're, we're not adding. So I think the why lag was important. And then I think Suzanne, you may have gotten to the other piece that was on my mind, which is, which is, I think this, the, the legwork to be ready to get to agreement is different than the, the agreement conversations. And the more we can accelerate and, and parallel path, the legwork to get there is, is helpful for that. For that, for that speed, for sure. And then more important, I want to underscore, because I think Superintendent is correct, that we, we will satisfy no one with this conversation, but potentially satisfy no one. But it is important to say is, the, the district is being asked to set a plan. And it is our intention to set that plan. And the setting of that plan may be victory to some and sadness to others. But we will set the plan regardless. So I, then the other things we'll have to follow to make sure we can, we can actually start. But I, I think it's just important to say that it is different than just, hey, we want to set some dates and we're gonna pick dates today. But we are gonna set dates, I believe, in accordance with what we're being asked to do.
Well, and along the same lines, I think it's important to understand that there's a lot of work that went into the actual starting of hybrid school. Because there was a lot of staffing changes and hiring. And one of my side questions, if somebody knows the answers, is how many teachers did we end up hiring to fill the staffing for K three? And we needed to understand that we actually were close to a date that we were going to be able to start and the type of schedule we were gonna have before we were able to hire the teachers. Because hiring the teachers before we were actually going to go back would be very costly as well. So there was a lot of staffing work that went in to actually getting that group of kids back that will have to go into four, five. But of course, a lot more is understood about the whole process of returning kids, because we've been able to get back the younger kids. I do think it sounds very promising to be able to be doing the live streaming, because there'll be a lot less disruption to the classes. But you'll, from what I understand, you'll still be hiring additional teachers to make the staffing for four, five work.
Marty.
I think Natalie came up to respond to that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, she did. Oh, do I need to unmute you? I'm so sorry.
Yes, so we, I, I, I didn't know if you wanted me to answer those, Director Moore. We did hire, I believe, six teachers to fill in gaps for K three. And again, that was even with a pretty significant overstaffing already, at, at least at K one. And even with live streaming for four, five, we will be needing to hire even more teachers than what we did for K one. So.
Thank you.
Correct. We were CFO Cooper, we were twenty, twenty teachers overstaffed K one and still had to hire. So that's the, the doubt, the positive to being down in enrollment nearly nine and a half percent at elementary is you do have additional staff members. The negative is you don't have the funding for those staff. But at the same time, it did provide Executive Director Fowler more latitude to, to complete your staffing work, so.
Right. And all of this, and all of this work will have to happen as well at six through twelve. Again, it, it be with the live streaming, it won't be the type of impact of the K one or two, three. But still, there will be an impact and that will have to be addressed.
Now, Marty.
So for me, I, I wanted to just reiterate that, you know, I'm very much interested in seeing our kids get back as soon as possible. And understand that there's also training for the teachers that needs to happen for this transition. So, you know, this is, this is a ship. I, I, I know people don't like bureaucracy, but this is in some ways. It's a large organization and you can't just turn this ship on a dime. And so we need to make sure all of those things happen in order for it to be successful. And so I think that that's important work as well. And for me. And for me, I do appreciate hearing the conversation from the board about. We don't have to do it in this series where you do this thing, you know, we did that already. You know, but as far as going forward, we don't need to do everything in series of steps. That there are things that we can do concurrently, and I think that that's important for us to take a look at when we're setting what these dates are going to look like. But also know that we are probably not talking about all kids back in the classroom. But that that does happen in this report, you'll see that date's already there. August thirty first, which we still have to take action on that calendar, but I'm assuming that moving forward. That we are going to have all kids back in the classroom at the same time, but I don't see that that's going to be possible. In the short term, and we need to, much to what Sydney was saying, we need to be able to do our due diligence, like, are we able to do this safely? What are the things that we need to mitigate and do that with smaller portions, make sure that we know what we're doing before we increase things? So I think today is going to be dissatisfying for everyone, which is how you know you make a good decision. If no one's actually happy, you're somewhere in the middle. So I think setting a date is important. I want it as soon as we can, but I understand that our staff, both are. We call them teachers, I like to call them facilitators, facilitators of learning, need to be able to do their job and be prepared. To do what we're asking them to do and our administrative staff needs to be prepared to do the pieces that they need to do as well. And so I think for me now it's a matter of what dates. What dates are would be satisfactory.
Harlan.
Maybe our superintendent provided this, but I I didn't hear it clearly. Has there been any epidemiological clusters so far in our return to school? Because that, to Director Mullins' point, that I mean, there's a reason why we intentionally built in even more gap than was recommended. Because we wanted to be very transparent with our community, that we took this seriously and we're going to do everything we can to adjust as we needed to. So has there been anything that would need to warrant adjustments?
I see Assistant Superintendent Heckman has lit up her camera, so I'm going to let her because she's been our COVID czar through all of this. And I want to, before she speaks, I want to thank her publicly for all the really good work she's done managing that. Because I think it goes a long way towards getting the the good results, the good work that she's done. And our COVID supervisors in our buildings and our safety teams. So Lisa, can you address the question that Dr. Gallinger just asked?
Can, since returning K one and returning, anticipated returning to three, we have not had any outbreak or cluster cases. Not even a case where we have had two cases of either student, student, teacher, teacher, teacher in any one building. From from the inception, so for over the year that we have been experiencing this. I I'd have to check, I was, I was trying to get there really quick because I thought your question might be coming, I believe total. In total, we have had a total of four where there have been some sort of workplace or possible school transmission for the entire year.
Thank you for that. I think that's helpful. I hope we're communicating that as we welcome in. Our second and third grade families, it seems like we should update the community, say, wow, three weeks into K one learning tomorrow. We've had zero cases of transmission. And I think for, to the point of people who have said, like, who's watching these meetings, mostly secondary families. So they've probably seen our work and seen, and they probably have more confidence in in returning because they've seen all this work. So I think that that's really important. I guess I would challenge the second column. I don't think I need to see it on share screen because like it's it's a simple table. But on second column, what says date for full in person return. My specific thing is, I don't think we're going to get if if our destination on the first day of school is that we're back to quote. Normal, which means all students in full in person learning. And we have work as a board to do, but let's say the 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 six feet rule is is no longer there, but masks are vaccinations are there. So we've done various other layers of mitigation besides the six foot distancing. So how do we get there? I don't think we get there from what we're doing today as a three point five hour hybrid day to then full in person. So I really do believe that we have to do steps and when I've heard our superintendent of public instruction speak. He says that the, after you go from hybrid, then you go to full day instruction for students. And then you go from. Full day instruction for the students who are there to then piloting less than six feet. And his hope is is that. There will be districts, which I hope ours is, that will ask to pilot this with DOH and OSPI in the spring. To be able to do this because we're not going to get from where we are today. To the start of school without other steps in between. So my question specifically for our superintendent and team is. Have we made considerations about how we can move some districts, some some schools? Like certainly not Discovery where I live, where only forty percent returned in person. But we have many, many schools that it's much, much higher than that. Has there been consideration about moving some of our couple of our elementary schools to pilot? Four days of full day instruction? Because we've got to show this year in this school year that we can do lunch. As safely as possible before we actually do it for twenty one hundred, twenty one thousand students next school year.
Specifically only preliminary conversations, Dr. Gallinger, about grabbing a pilot school elementary, if you will. For a full day. I I think a good point was made here, too, that. You can be in full time instruction and still be in some type of, you know, you're going to still be mitigating. Risk, virus mitigation, just as an example, I mean, because and it's been noted here in this conversation. We are planning for the return of our students. As we are having our collective bargaining conversation because we have to, what do I mean by that? I know that. Our high school office and executive director Hood and and her support person have been. Researching how you do performing arts in a hybrid setting and how and how do you do band practice? And so looking into the the equipment, frankly, that is required to. And I don't, I I'm not going to claim that I fully understand it. I some, there are tents that students perform in, but there are also bags and mat, special masks that students wear and bags that go over. Well, all of that is being investigated right now, and in fact. It's it's quite spendy, but it's something that, you know, I anticipate we'll be following up on very shortly. Because I anticipate even if we are in full time, we may, we're still going to be doing some virus mitigation. Next year as well. So it, yeah, only preliminary conversations, Dr. Gallinger, about setting a pilot. Certainly, a conversation has has happened and, you know, kind of preliminary, looking at the buildings that might be the best. Test cases for that. And then other work happening about how we could be in full time instruction. And while implementing mitigations as well. And, you know, again, I, we could even be at a place where we have all of our students in a building, but that doesn't mean that we're doing. Lunch maybe in the way we've done it historically, we're not doing assemblies where we put two thousand students in a gymnasium and things like that. But we may still have a lot of kids in the school and and be mitigating. And I would anticipate probably mask wearing and things like that will will be part of the fall. Probably regardless of where we're at in a lot of other ways, so and. So, yeah, some of those conversations are happening, but no firm plans yet have been developed. Other than to say there are plans being firmed up around how we can support CTE courses. Performing arts courses, those that really, I think, will be, you know, almost critical that they be in person. But they also have to be very carefully mitigated, you know, and I know there's a lot of rules around band and choir and things like that. And we will know those rules, we will implement those rules. I don't know, Dawn, if you wanted to add something about that, I see your camera just came on.
They're they're thankfully very straightforward, that the national organization or one of the national organizations that. Sort of is that professional organization for music teachers did some really good work on this. And in fact, one of them, even one of the authors of the study responded to one of our music teachers. Who had a couple clarifying questions, which was super amazing. But essentially, they have slightly enhanced physical distancing of nine feet. They set a time limit of no more than thirty minutes for musical output, if you will, the things that require breathing, whether it's singing. Or a musical instrument that where you're, you know, blowing into a wind instrument. And yes, we have identified a couple of vendors, you'll forgive me for not saying their names out loud because we want to keep them and be able to get their supply. And we have a price tag, I have sent that to Jake and to Ron. I'm super excited that our music teachers were just so willing to jump in and talk with us about. The various differences between the materials and what we could track down. And we had about five different school districts respond to us and help us identify good materials and good vendors. And things they were pleased with and things they would steer us away from, so it was a really truly collaborative effort. And Dawn Wallace and TLS helped out as well, and we got instrument counts and the whole bit, we're ready to go.
Sydney.
Yeah, I did, I just wanted to build on top of what what Harlan was just saying about the. How the plan is it structured in this document is is just, it's not, it's rudimentary, right? It's it's much simpler than what we'll actually have to do to figure out our. My brain keeps saying step down approach, but I guess the step up approach into bringing in in more and more. So I just think we just have to make sure from a, obviously from a district and planning perspective, which we just heard about. The detail we go through that we set over time here. That we don't lose time in setting out what some of those big, big milestones may be along the way in order to say, okay, if we want to be. If we want to be to this point by the end, then there's some steps back we're going to have to to take. And we will, that's just time we're going to have to make sure we're dedicating to specifically that that step up plan. Along the way, I think this is fine for a rudimentary directional. Process we're going to take, but there'll just be some more work time on what the ramp looks like.
And to be clear, this form is required for us to qualify for S R two dollars, which I think we were told is about two million dollars to our district. Which I I hope that, you know, since as a board, we get to control budget, one of the few things we have. Oversight over, but I hope that we start collecting S R dollars to leverage. A summer program or some sort of a jumpstart process, you know. From my early learn elementary world, Assistant Superintendent Bongard can hammer me for this. But, you know, I think one of the things that she's done so successfully is this jumpstart program, and I know ISF funded a lot of it. So if it works well for kindergartners and for our earlier learners and in this sort of recovery from COVID pandemic. Why can't we have some process like that for? All of our learners and specifically target our learners farthest from educational equity. And I would love for us to start collecting S R dollars and as a board, we're going to be focused on fighting for these S R dollars. Now through the start of next school year with both local, state, federal legislators on this. To say these S R dollars should go towards recovery and recovery and as classical means. You know, targeted learning outside of the hundred and eighty days school year. So I know this, I'm I'm veering far, sorry, President Weaver, but I really do think that the whole point of this is a reminder for everyone is to qualify for S R two dollars. And that. I really think that we should take that mandate seriously and target those monies towards recovery. And and bringing students back early. The August thirty first, it makes me a little surprised about how early it is, but earlier than that. So we can really. Give people the, our students the best start possible to start closing those gaps as soon as we can.
Jody.
This may be a little premature, Director Gallinger, Jody Bongard, Assistant Superintendent Elementary. But we just finalized plans today during Ed planning meeting. And we do have plans at both elementary and secondary. And our plan is to run again the pre K, but add kindergarten to it as well at three satellites. And then also run a K five at Clark. And providing like we have with the pre K model for years. Transportation as as well as there will be no fee, it will be invitation only. So we we just finalized those plans, we've put out calls for in our. H R news for staff that are interested in working for the during the summer. And so we're we're excited, we've, we've got plans underway to try to help some mitigate some of the COVID learning loss.
Okay, anyone else? Want to try to fill out this form?
Point of clarity, President Weaver, because I know that we attached the completed form. And I I don't know if the board had any questions about some of the other questions and how we answered them. Or if the board wanted to mostly start talking about the return dates, starting with our fourth graders.
That's a good point. Were there questions about any of the rest of the form?
No, because to Director Mullins' point is like, it's very rudimentary, like, as you know, in Izakla, we don't expect. That that is just a state checkbox. We have much higher expectations of which we were alluding to already for summer. And I really appreciate Assistant Superintendent Bongard's response, and I I know we're veering off, but. I think it shows like we're we're really looking at, not because we're giving up on this year, but we absolutely are starting the recovery process. Because we have to, we're all educators, we care desperately about our students, which is why we're still meeting here on a special meeting tonight on Tuesday.
Yeah, I and and I really do appreciate the the point that this is very much kind of a OSPI checkbox kind of thing. I I appreciate that they want some information back as they're about to distribute millions and millions of taxpayer dollars. Out to districts. And and this is a requirement for us to be able to do that. But the point is well taken that this does not staff, this does not staff a grade level, this does not staff a building. There's a tremendous amount of work that Natalie and her team have to do in order to make that happen. So I appreciate the acknowledgement of that from the standpoint of the board. What it does do, however, is it it lays out a timeline, basically, if you will. For when we would like to see those returns and so those, for those who have looked at it, they know that our our pre K date came in October one. We actually had a couple of kids in in late September, but our kindergarten to eleven, our first grade to eleven. We're excited about our second and third grade coming in later this week on three, March four. And so really, it's just about trying to get a good sense of what we think. Would be the cadence going forward now with our our four through tenth.
Okay, and I think I heard that the natural cadence of four and five would be March twenty fifth. Yeah.
That would be my suggestion, and I believe that, and I would ask Natalie or Jake or anybody to weigh in. But I I believe I've been told that that was challenging, but realistic and doable for us.
That they say, because we've announced it here that they're going to choose something different, so otherwise, then we should choose a different date.
I mean, I, I, let's just be open and transparent about it. Again, it's it's in keeping with the, in my mind, it's in keeping with the original M O U. It makes sense and I I I will tell you internally, I was pressing for an earlier date. And the team told me that would be problematic and that's also some feedback from our our schools that are actually having. Students return and in person now, but I haven't been told that the twenty fifth isn't realistic.
And one of the things we haven't talked about is the fact that COVID cases are continuing to decrease at a rapid rate. So we're getting very close to the, is it fifty per hundred thousand, at which point they say all your kids should be in school?
Yeah, two of the three primary metrics that King County Public Health Monitor are already in the low. The only one that's not in the low is the cases per hundred thousand, and if I recall, it was at eighty seven or eighty nine today. So you're right, Director Weaver, dropping fast when you think that there was a time when that number was well up in the three hundreds a couple of months ago.
And Superintendent CFO Cooper here. We also saw from executive, King County Executive. We also saw from executive, King County Executive Dow Constantine, the news about King County being the second lowest major metropolitan area in the nation. COVID rates only behind Hawaii, I believe. So.
Correct. Which is to our point about why we have, you know, it's frustrating that the context of these numbers that were, I know, I'll just push Director Mulling's buttons arbitrary. You know, not based on 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 best practice or or public health science. But chosen by politicians, which I think made our jobs harder. But to that point, we have an opportunity. And so President Weaver, I guess I would say I would like us to set dates, but I want a personal asterix that says that because it's very clear. So I'll read it from the December 16. It says that less than 50 cases per 100,000 over 14 days provide in-person learning for all students. And one of the things we did way back in July, August, as this board was to say that we were establishing our resolution based on the framework, or what that point was the decision tree. Now it's called the framework. And I think we need to continue to anchor our work on that. So I would say, yes, we set dates, but with an asterisk saying these dates will be no later than when we cross the 50 per 100,000 over 14 day threshold. And I think that's going to be sooner rather than later. But to directly answer your question. I'm biased and believe that that transition period should be something that we value and really spend time on. So I would say that on March 25th, that we would return fourth, five, as well as sixth graders and ninth graders. If I could choose anything, that's what be what I would produce. So I'm just going to kickstart the conversation.
Well, I was just gonna, I mean, I'd like to get the kids back as soon as possible. I had been thinking like the March 29th, so just at the beginning of the week after we get back four or five to bring back all six through 12. But this idea that when we hit this magic, we go under 50 cases per 100,000, we can just open the next day and have our all grades back in, isn't realistic if the staffing work hasn't had an opportunity to take place and the training in advance of it. So as much as I would love them in the minute we hit, you know, 50, I think I think at this stage, setting our target date and working to that, even if we hit the below 50 before we get to the whether we pick March 25th or March 29th is our target date to get those kids back.
Well, particularly because we still have a sequence of steps we have to follow. And we still have to provide teacher training, as you mentioned, staffing and, yeah, and set up classrooms and all of that. So.
So I guess that can be our our question to our bargainers, the the ability to get the staffing done by, say, March 25th or March 29th for our secondary.
And I would guess Director Moore, it was not that obviously we would start the the day we cross that threshold, but that that would be the target of announcing the seven day. I think our our previous MUs have all talked about a seven day lead time to provide the acknowledgement of we're going to return to school seven days from now type of thing.
Oh, I can do that.
Getting the ball started. So it's not that when we cross the threshold on April 1st, that we will then go to school on April 1st, but that it initiates what I think typically has been that seven day process to get things forward.
Right. But I also see we're not waiting till we get to the 50 or under. Because we're
I'm just saying no later, no later than.
Right.
Because if 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 we're talking about negotiations and and our bargaining team has come back with May 15th, that's a problem for me if we live under 50 per 100,000 from April 1st.
Exactly. I agree.
And I I did want to, Chief Financial Officer Cooper, I I did want to let the board know that your 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 bargainers are course are in an interesting position because we we're not we do not like to bargain in public. So we're not, we won't, you know, obviously we'll we provide you guidance in executive session. I will say part of this and is our impact bargaining requirements with our labor groups. So, you know, we have close contracts with all your union groups at this point in time. However, we're obligated to impact bargain, which means if management makes or implements a decision, we are legally obligated to listen to labor's concerns and then determine what we could do to ameliorate those concerns. So, you know, we don't not necessarily need to reach an agreement. However, we like to reach an agreement with our labor partners because they they are integral in all the work we do. And, you know, it's pretty tough to have school without teachers. And so that'd be, you know, so we we, of course, what we're we'll do is directed by the superintendent and the board and but I I think we've given you advice during an executive session and Ms. Fowler and Assistant Superintendent Bongard. We're probably not likely to opine too much to you right now in in public setting. So just just to make you aware, we're not trying to dodge. We're just trying to provide that there's some sanctity and professionalism that goes in that bargaining. So I thought I'd go on the record about that. So please proceed with your deliberations and I'll listen keenly for my directions.
And and to be clear, I think the board has also always been in agreement that we absolutely want to reopen collaboratively. There's there's never been any question of that. But we also want to do it sooner rather than later. Sydney.
That's the beauty of negotiations. Everybody has a position. You come to an answer. One of my favorite things to do. So I guess what is important for for me in this conversation is is though, at least saying my own personal perspective, which is that that 50 number, that range is material to me. And so I think that absolutely we want to be collaborative. Absolutely. We want to get to an agreement that makes sense for everyone. We go back together. But I think it is important to state out loud that that number is real. We're approaching it quickly. And I think it is a very different conversation once we get into the low and just reminding ourselves that per the framework. We were instructed to take to have more children back in the classrooms above in the high. So I I personally will have little patience to to tolerate waiting beyond beyond entering the low. And so I just want to just state that that that's a threshold. Obviously, I want before we get there. But I do think it's a different conversation at that 50 mark. And so what you said, Harlan, about I I don't know how we do that, but tying the crossing of that milestone to starting the process to move. I do think is an important piece. The seven day notice or whatever that is, like we we gotta, we gotta go.
And I would be fine with your, I think you threw out the date of March 29. I guess I I I still feel like in the days leading up to that transition day or some at some point, we we need to give special attention to our sixth grader and ninth graders who've never been in the building. And I I'm I'm not an administrator in the district or a teacher, so I I can't speak to how that gets done. But I know we do a great job of transition in normal years. And we need to do something so it's just not pure chaos for our students. And anxiety provoking even more than they're already feeling in the era of our really crazy year. So I guess I would, I would have some sort of caveat that either they go in earlier than that, or there's somehow there's a lag, but I I just really think that we need to make sure we think thoughtfully about how we bring our sixth graders and eighth graders in.
And then Sydney.
Yeah, well, I I think that's a fair question to ask Donna and Jason if they'd like to chime in. And some of that could just be the logistic of how that happens. Because if we're going with a model that is 25% of students each day. So so it's a small group if we are, it's just 25% of students for each of those days, because otherwise for the sixth graders. I you know, if there was an opportunity to bring all that wanted to come back and I mean, that worked, but I think it's really what the staff is thinking about how they welcome back all the kids to these buildings.
But even like an orientation day where there was web leaders doing, you know, where you brought sixth graders in on buses. And so they learned that and then you had web leaders go around and in small groups, walk them through school. Any of that, something just to make it both tangible and meaningful before they roll in and do, oh, now you're back in school. I I just think we really need to make sure that that's going to happen. And our staff's probably already way well ahead of us. I just don't want that to be lost in translation of us just like setting dates.
Well, I know something that Jason and I have talked about is there there's certainly opportunities to do that within a regular school day too. So if we do bring a 25% group onto site, right, you'd essentially be running four first days back. And so I think one of the things we would want our staff to be sensitive to is everyone is getting reacclimated. And we're all going to embrace the awkward together. It's going to feel a little weird and it's going to be a little different no matter when we do it. And I think that that's something we would want to work with our staff on through staff warning and how our principals really be emphasizing. And I think we could do some grade specific, grade level specific things and activities inside that school day. I want to be sensitive to the fact I wouldn't want to slow down any conversations happening at the bargaining table by having to carve out a sort of separate event or separate day for a single group, but that maybe we could keep that sort of focus on all the high schoolers in these groups coming back and then do the work inside the school day potentially. So that's some of what we've been talking about and planning for.
I certainly, I certainly see the point as far as giving those kids that just haven't been in our buildings a chance to kind of see them without other distractions. I I could kind of go either way on it. I think I find myself almost arguing with myself. Because if I set aside time for the sixth graders, am I am I taking away precious time from my eighth and ninth, or I'm sorry, seventh and eighth graders? That I'm just wanting to get all kids in as soon as possible. And then the other piece that I kind of wrestle with as well is the way our sixth grade schedule is is developed. We certainly don't, you know, school within a school or or put them all by themselves, but most of our classes at sixth grade are typically sixth grade only. So there may be a way that we can achieve kind of both ends, if you will, we can really give those sixth grade kids time in the building. I like the idea of trying to schedule some web activities within that day. If we can do that with grouping and and mining all the safety precautions and still get our seventh and eighth graders. And I feel like I'm kind of torn between the idea of trying to get everyone in as soon as possible or delaying some seventh graders. That quite frankly, you know, those seventh graders missed, you know, 30% of their year last year too. And so I think I'm just torn and open to more planning around that. But I do think there's some chances for those sixth graders to be kind of within their own. Most of our schools try to put their sixth grade classes in a wing and those teachers are going to be critical. The other thing is is I I would like to also hear from Assistant Sue Bongard on how those kindergartners did. Because I know we've talked about that. And I've heard some stories, you know, about how those kindergartners, which that's that's usually, I I I see sixth grade transitioning kindergarten transition is pretty similar. And so maybe we can learn from that as well. Jody, what'd you find there?
Well, I have to say, not only did our kindergartners do great with the transition. Even more impressive was our transitional K. They're four, four years old. And those kids came back January 11th and I was there to greet them as they came off the bus and they didn't miss a beat. They saw the spots on the ground. They lined up six feet apart. They all had their mask on and again, kudos to our transitional K teacher Lori and the crew at IVE because they made sure they were very proactive in having protocols in place. But I have to say, we we've not had issues with the transition with our younger learners. They've they've done beautifully. I I think Superintendent Thiele has witnessed that firsthand as I have.
I have and they have, and kudos to our teachers and our principals. I will say, though, as a former middle school principal, a sixth grader may not be quite as compliant as a five year old sometime. Throwing that out there.
It's a true statement. It's a, it's an, it's a good idea. I think it's it's worthy to kick around. My, again, my only thing is I just don't want to delay anything, but I I I see the value in it, Dr. Gallinger. You know, we can certainly investigate that. And to that end, it's going to be interesting to see how kids jump back into an in-person environment after they've been with their teacher on Zoom all the time. I think we've done some professional development with our counseling staff and our principals around, you know, the concept of how do we manage that? When, you know, some of those kids have had their cameras off during the instruction and how do we manage that transition back? That's going to be critical. The way we handle that is going to be, I think, critically important to the amount we can leverage out of the rest of this school year. So I appreciate that input, Dr. Gallinger.
Okay, Marty and then Sydney.
So I'm just wondering, you know, as we talk about this, I do see kind of the points on both sides, as long as our our kids that are coming into that school for the first time get a chance to have that welcoming feeling that first day of school. So it sounds to me, though, and I just want to make this clear for the public, it sounds to me like we're looking at grade band. Grade band coming in because somebody was talking about, I think it was Donna was talking about four first days. So bringing in those 25%, are we thinking grade bands? Are we thinking groupings?
No, and and I know this question has come up before. The 25% will be based on a combination of alpha groups and family groups, right? Because we'd want siblings to come on the same day. And Kim Michael has already worked with us in student information systems to start calculating those for each school, both middle and high. And the principals have started looking at them already. So I I think that what's important to remember is many of our courses are mixed grade. So really, to make sure we have a 25 percentile group, we have to count the kids and we we can't do it based on grade level. So in, I mean, gosh, in a culinary class, you'll have ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th all mixed together, taking culinary. So when you do a pure 25%, you should have a nice mix of people. That's how we're going to approach it.
So I think, given that, then I would be curious as to whether or not you can state like March 25th for sixth and ninth grade, have them come in on that Wednesday for a couple of hours as a marked day.
And I think a Wednesday afternoon, Marty, would be actually a really great idea. And I I just, I'm not certain that that is something that we would necessarily need to bargain, but I would trust Natalie with that. But yeah, Wednesday would be a great idea.
So have them come in for a small portion on a Wednesday with the understanding that then that following Monday, they would fall into whatever cadence data that would come in that week.
And they may want to do something small four times. I think my building administrators have probably talked to their activity coordinators about this and and are starting to anticipate, you know, some options and orientation kinds of experiences they can create.
Especially our sixth graders, if we could stagger them on a Wednesday. So we're not bringing in, you know, a typical sixth grade class might be 300 to 400 kids. We obviously don't want quite that many at one time, but if we could stagger them throughout a Wednesday, it would be kind of neat to have them, you know, find their class, walk around the school. One thing to keep in mind that I'm very sensitive to is with our spring closure, we didn't have our typical transition day where the kids get to come to school and and walk around and see our gym and do an assembly. So Wednesday, that's that idea sounded pretty good to me.
Yeah, and I've got some ideas on that, both Jason and Donna, about some different things that we can process. But I think we heard loud and clear from the board, anything that we can do for our sixth graders and our ninth graders to acclimate them to the building before we start those 25% classes coming in would be beneficial to everybody. So I've got some ideas on that. We can definitely grow that and maybe have a report back out by the 11th, the next meeting about some ideas we have.
Sydney's got a hand up. And then I do just want to point out, this is a fabulous conversation. We're also a half hour past our time, so probably look, I'm pulling it together at some point.
Tight agenda for us. That's
I don't know. I didn't want to be here till midnight, did you?
Oh, wow.
What emotion? Are we going to take, we're going to take action on this? Or we just? No.
Do we need to?
Well,
That's what I'm asking.
There is one thing too on the actual template. And again, it's just the template. But there's a comment section at the bottom. And we can certainly write in any any comments. I already that, again, that's my rough draft that that I was attached. But I made a comment related to the start full full return needing the six foot, six foot physical barrier to be removed. If you wanted to add a comment about the the 50 cases per 100,000, no later than that drop. However, you want to approach that, I just throw that out there as an option too.
Do we really need to put that in the form though?
Not necessarily, but if you wanted it in the public record was my thinking.
I would like it in.
But but if we're not taking action, then we're leaving it up to our superintendent to fill in the words.
We leave everything to our superintendent.
I'm I'm happy to do that for you, Director Moore. Trust me.
I know, but okay, so here, so we've been throwing out dates, so then I guess we'll turn it around to the superintendent. If we don't take action. If we don't take action, what dates are you going to put in this form?
I don't, hold on, I don't think we're done before we get there.
Yeah, that's really putting me on the spot there, Director Moore.
We could be on the spot and we can direct you by a vote to put the dates in there.
I mean, no, we can take action if that, if that feels better.
I'm asking.
I haven't heard anything that I disagree with from the board conversation. I've actually penciled in the three twenty-five date for four or five. It's just in pencil. You can tell me if it needs to change. I heard the conversation about the three twenty-nine. I like that. I know that that one might be a bit of a stretch for the team to be able to be prepared. But hey, what's, what's the worst thing that could happen? I mean, I don't mind having a stretch goal, if you will. So I'm comfortable with, with those dates, but again, I know the board has more talking to do.
Okay, Sydney.
So about formal action or not, you know, I'm not the Roberts Rules expert. So if it's about just like reading back a summary of what we talked about versus formal action, I'm flexible on that. But what I would want to understand more before, before a couple more things I have before I get to like my opinion on the, the specific dates. First is this idea of whether we're all, all secondary at once, I guess is maybe what I want to talk about. And is there, are there any concerns, shared resources, shared staffing or other effort that would have to be set forth across both high and middle? That we would want to somehow have a separation or is of date? Or are the two separate enough? That if we say come both middle and high at the same date, that we could, we can execute from an actual execution perspective on the same date? That's my first question.
Thus far, we have been planning to, to be able to go at the same time. We, we don't see any conflicts there. Now, does that mean we might identify one in the next twenty-four to forty-eight hours? Maybe. But to date, I have no reason to say we couldn't do it.
Wonderful. That music to my ears.
Yeah, Director Mullins, I was going to mention that one, a couple of the variables there would be like transportation and Donna and I, Donna and I have been coordinating around that to try to make sure those systems work simultaneously. We do share some teachers and I think our, our scheduling, we can make that work as well. So.
Okay, so that's great. And then the other point is maybe back to my point earlier about the remaining groups. We said we're farthest from educational justice. So the groups we had remaining are really, as I understand it, and I'm happy to be corrected, were groups that are sprinkled throughout these general grade bands and we had challenges to bring back in earlier date. So accelerating, or if I, if I was to say, which is clearly where I'm about to say, that I want to bring secondary, all secondary same day, that's where I'm going with this. That will, that will bring back all the rest of the list, correct? Of the folks we said we wanted to serve as soon as possible. Is that correct?
Yeah, you, at that, at that point, you would have an option for every student to have an in-person option, Director Mullins.
Director Mullins, just to add to that, I don't know of, of, you know, where our plans will land. But with my experience in observing some of our colleagues in local districts, one thing they did, for example, White River, is when they came back and brought their secondary kids back, six through twelve, within that construct, they built in some time for additional support for specific groups of students. So perhaps students with special needs or with some learning accommodations that needed to be met. The way they mitigated that was to, so for example, in White River, they have like a, an A B morning afternoon. They might have, you know, the most students do an AM or a PM. And then they might have a smaller group that is a, a, a group they chose to target, do the whole day. And so that is another tool that we could leverage with, with kind of what we're hoping to, 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 to go about. Is, you know, if, if we do twenty-five percent a day, perhaps there's opportunities for special groups to do a little more throughout the week. If that helps.
Layered supports is, is beautiful. So I guess I'll just be clear of where I am, I'm at with this, which is I want all secondary as soon as possible same date because there are three different sets of buildings. So after four or five, and if that means, I, I, I assume for me, it's maybe the actual structure of the day. That's the biggest question to get to, whether it's same day as four or five or the following Monday or following day, but that's, that's where I'm at.
Which could go back to Anne's, March twenty-ninth.
That's right.
Plus that gives all kids one day back before break.
Yes.
And I do want, and I do want to talk more later about that piece about the additional layered supports for where we know we have some folks that may need that. So I don't want to lose that, that one, but yes.
Okay, anybody else? Because what I just heard was kind of like we had all our dates. Superintendent Thiele, is that what you heard?
I, I have penciled in now three twenty-nine, grade six through twelve with, in my mind, an asterisk that absolutely no later than, you know, monitoring once the cases drop to fifty or below per hundred thousand.
Harlan. Harlan.
Then my request is, is on behalf of the board, Suzanne and I, or whoever Suzanne delegates, work with superintendent and then engage every single bargaining group leader who's willing to sign on to a letter that we need to send out tomorrow before noon to the governor, OSPI and DOH and request respectfully that they allocate doses to us. We have again, this week submitted a request for forty-seven hundred and forty doses. And that we request, given the new information from President Biden and Governor Inslee, we have it set up. King County has been ignoring East King County for a year. And that we request this on behalf of all of our educators. So that as part of this state setting, which I'm fine with, I still believe we need an asterisk in the comment section or no later than when we cross below the less than fifty per hundred thousand over fourteen days. But that we say, and we firmly request that we get dose allocation on behalf of our educators. Because they need to know, yeah, we're asking for students to be served, but we've been fighting since December for you and we're not going to stop until we're putting needles in arms for those that want to take advantage of that. And I think that's something that's not like, oh, we'll talk about and come back on our March eleventh meeting. We need to do that and be delegated that the ability of this board to do that tomorrow. That's my request.
So are you requesting like a letter from the board or action by the board or something for us to say that the board has consensus that we want you to go forth and draft that?
Or head nodding from the board and director, our president to do it? I mean,
I mean, let me just be clear. I think it's a, it, it, it's a very good idea. I, we should, we, I, I, we want vaccine. We've made it clear. We, we did all the work to get the centers created. We've just been eagerly awaiting. The only challenge that I could see and I would have to ask Jake or Natalie or Jody or somebody is I like the idea and the power of having all of my union presidents sign on that letter. Just logistically, get the letter drafted and get it signed by everybody in a twenty-four hour timeline, but I, I certainly think the idea makes a lot of sense. The, the form itself has to be submitted through the, the portal or whatever. So I don't know that there's an ability to attach a letter to it. We could certainly put that in the comment section, just like we will the, the fifty K or whatever. But I think a letter to the governor, to Superintendent Reichdahl, Department of Health. Be honest, I'm not, I can't remember the director of that agency right now. Certainly, given what the president said today, President of the United States said today, and then the governor and what's being reported. It's like, okay, come on, you, you've got, you've got one district out here. And I want this for all districts. Let me be clear on all educators. But you've got a district that is literally standing at the ready, ready to go if they would just send us the doses.
Right, and I will happily draft that letter and send it to our superintendent and president of the board. And I know you may not, I'll do that before I go to bed tonight, and I know we may not have everyone sign it. It'd be great if we could put our I A president on the, on, on, on the
The signature line?
Yeah, to, to do that. I'm not sure if she's willing to commit that tonight, but maybe she, if she's on this call, could reach out to her I A exec to get that authority. But we've heard very clearly and I think we can reach out to as many as possible. I know Jake's really good at that. And say, hey, we're going to draft this letter. We're going to get out, get this out. And we, we want to do everything we can and we've been doing everything we can, but I think now is the time to do it. And I would ask all these parents and community members who are here wanting kids in person, just like we do. We're being told by the state that, that the King County is one who decides who gets, who, they recommend who gets dose allocation within our county. So I would request that all these people who are so good at sending emails to all of us, that you send emails to our King County council members who represent our district, which is Claudia Balducci for Bellevue, Kathy Lambert for Samamish and Reagan Dunn for Isaklaa Newcastle and Renton, to send emails to them to make it very clear that we have been inequitable, inequitably left out of dose allocation in East King County. And we have a clinic that's set up and ready and that our educators deserve the opportunity to be vaccinated, just like Bellevue's had the opportunity to last week. And Seattle, all the funding and resources go to Seattle. We're not even asking for extra funding. Our superintendent has directed our district to set this up without asking for seven million dollars, which is what King County has set up mass vaccination sites at a cost for. We're just asking for doses. So maybe Stephen can put it in the chat box for people.
He just did.
Perfect. Send them the emails like this is the time. I truly believe they're deciding the dose allocation for March eighth within the next twenty-four hours and this is our time to say, we've been patiently waiting. Now is our time.
Yeah, thank you for that. That's a good point.
And members of the board, Superintendent, I want to say that every, every time I talk to one of my labor partners, and I had two different bargaining sessions today with two groups, I A and transportation. And they both, everybody always asks me for an update. And so, you know, I'm not going to speak for them, but I know that I've had nothing but positive feedback from all our labor units. And I A processed their support of their application to their exec board. And so to that end, you know, we might not be able to gather all the signatures that quickly, but we'll try. We'll try to turn, turn some signatures if we can. Or we could write a standalone letter that the superintendent and I could draft with all our labor partners and send it to the county as well, because Dr. Gallinger is right. We, a lot of staff have worked very diligently to get this up and running. The center is set up literally in a, in a, one of our gymnasiums and ready to go. And we have physicians locally, Dr. Gallinger and several others that are helping underwrite this and our nursing staff is on board. So literally, as he said, all we are waiting for are doses and we'll be ready to go. And so I appreciate that, Dr. Gallinger. I know it's been frustrating. Dr. Gallinger and I talk every Friday, I submit a survey, he submits it on the medical side and we just wait. And then, you know, we wait some more. So hopefully we can get those vaccines in because I, I do think that would be helpful to all of us to get kids back. So.
Great. So Superintendent, do you have adequate guidance from the board to finish this form?
I believe I do. I got my dates. I got three twenty-five and three twenty-nine working on three twenty-five for four or five, three twenty-nine through six through twelve. In the comment section, the note about the no later than a time in which the cases per one hundred K drop below the fifty K. And we've got our, you know, internally, we know that has a seven day notification. And then, so I'm fine with that, President Weaver, I can get that done and we can get that submitted tomorrow morning. And then, but I do like the idea and I'm concerned about the timeline that Dr. Gallinger spoke to about getting a message out to our King County electeds on the council as well as our, our state officials. So, you know, getting a, getting a draft together and then we can get, get to work on getting signatures on that. And I do like the idea of getting, making something happen because if they're going to be deciding who gets doses for next week, I, I want to, I want to pound that drum a little bit.
Yeah, it's time to be a squeaky wheel.
We decide that on Wednesday and Thursday, so I promise you I will have that to your hands before my head hits the pillow, whenever that is, wherever this meeting ends.
Thank you, Dr. Gallinger. I'll stop talking.
I would, I would like, I don't know if I, if I, if I didn't hear any response to it, but I think it's important as we welcome our second and third graders and that it would be great if there was communication and saying, hey, after three weeks of learning with K one in the buildings, we have not had any COVID cases. I, I, I think that it's really important part of that communication process and transparency for us to get, it's all about building towards next fall. Our families and community deserve to know that, hey, here's what we did, here's what we promised and here's what we've delivered. Still with the understanding that we know, we know it's not, it's inevitable, especially when we're bringing back our secondary kids. But I think it goes to show all the work that's gone on behind the scenes that Lisa Heckman and her team have done with all the COVID coordinators and all of our staff in partnership with I A and the rest of our labor groups to say collectively, this is what we've accomplished together. So I would just really encourage that.
Director Gallinger, I did send Executive Director Lisa Engels a, a series of information and some data that she can use for our communication to support that point that you're making.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Okay, are we ready to move to the calendar? I would entertain a motion.
Okay. I moved the board approved the school year calendar for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any conversation, discussion? Comments? Harlan.
I just want to say thank you to our superintendent and team for bringing this calendar before the board. I know this was one, the last thing you wanted to do in the midst of all the other heavy lifting that you're doing. But I do believe that this is a family and student friendly calendar and you'd heard me beat this drum for a long time. That if we're going to have snow makeup days, having them before our testing window, especially for our secondary students who are taking AP and IB tests is much more valuable than adding that on June twentieth. So, thank you.
Marty.
I would just like to quickly thank staff and especially Tom Mullins' group and Capitol Projects because we did pull this in by a week. But for the, the entire time that I've been on the board, I've had community members come to me and saying that we are not honoring one of our, what is it, the five broadest religions represented in the United States. And had this ball fallen on Rosh Hashanah, I think that it would have been a disregard of that community. So I thank you that even though it's going to be tough and we've pulled it in by a week and that in the world of construction, that is huge. I recognize that, but I think this was vitally important for us to continue to remember that we have a very diverse community who we worship, the things that are important and traditional in our families. And so I do thank the board and, and staff for representing that in the calendar.
And well, I'll just add on to Marty's to, because the, the original calendar had August thirty-first as the start date. So we didn't, we didn't bring it in, but we wanted to. But recognized we couldn't do that because of the conflict with the Jewish holidays. And we did not, we did not want to proceed with that. And so we went back to the original date that we had set for the start of school, even though it will make the timelines for the Capitol Projects tougher. So.
And we did all, also listen to the, quite a bit of community input, which was this is not the year to shorten our midwinter break. People on our week and, and that's fair. So I guess I will ask, is there any public input on the calendar? If so, raise your magic little hand. Yes, oh, Dorana.
Dorana's there.
Oh, do I need to, I'm sorry. Oh, do I need to, I'm sorry.
Which while, while you're unmuting her, thank you, Dorana, for how quickly you and your exec board turned that vote on the calendar. We really appreciated that. Thank you.
You're welcome, and I appreciate the work that we were able to do with Josh Almy, um. And coming up to an agreement, so. I, I'm just gonna be real quick. I just, I really urge the board to approve the newly negotiated, uh, district calendar. I think it. It meets, uh, many of our family needs, uh, the board needs, and also. The staff member needs, and so I just urge you to, um, go ahead and move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorana. Um, okay, with that, if there is no more discussion, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Closed. Abstentions. The calendar passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you again, um.
Or a big smile on Jake's face.
Yeah. Uh, thank, thank you to the team. You know, the negotiations going all the way back to last year with. Assistant Superintendent Heckman, and then earlier with Natalie, and then, um, with Dr. Almy here. Uh, really do appreciate it. I would like to note, and I think I can say this fairly safely looking at my weather app. Um, had this been a regular year, we wouldn't have even had a two hour delay at this point. So, you know, weather in the Northwest, try to predict it. Two years ago, we lose six days of school in the month of February. Last year, we lose three days. And then this year, it looks like we would have had none. So, anyway, try, try to figure out our, our weather patterns. Good luck with that, but. Really appreciate everybody's work on this. I know it comes as a big relief to the community, and. Frankly, we know we've got to get to work on the twenty two, twenty three calendar now too. So, but thank you for that.
Okay, and that moves us on to a discussion of open public meetings. So by virtue of the fact that King County moved, um. Into. Face, I'm sorry, I've lost my faces. Is it face two? Two, thank you. Um. We do have the ability to hold our meetings in person. Um, it's not quite as simple as just, oh, great, let's hold the meetings in person. We have to be able to take. Public input both in person and remotely. We have to. Limit the size of our audience to twenty five percent of the capacity of the room, but we have to be sure that we have, um. Adequate space for any overflow, so that people can participate, people. Who come in person can participate in the meeting in person. Um, we can't say, oh, we're only gonna take in person input, or we're only gonna take remote input. Um, I believe there are some requirements about sanitizing the microphone every time we use it, um. So, there's a lot going on there. So, um, I know we all desperately wanna meet in person. Um, but I wanna make sure that. We can effectively manage it and that staff can effectively manage it. So, Harlan.
I, I just wanna say, you know, I, I know that there's a lot of burdens to do a high rib meeting. And thankfully, you're the president and have to do this and not me. Um, so I appreciate that. But. I think that we need to do this, because we're, we're essentially asking our teachers to do this. If we're saying that their model is gonna be twenty five percent in person and the rest at home. They are going to also have to simultaneously navigate getting questions from the students at home. And the students in person. And so. If we can't navigate this technology and demonstrate this, then how could we be asking our staff to do that? So I absolutely think that this is not only a nicety, this is absolutely necessity. The other thing is. We've heard over the course of time that. Why aren't you having meetings in person? You're asking teachers to meet in person, and you're not willing to meet in person. Well, we haven't been able to, and now we can. And so this is why we should. Not only do we want to, and we believe it is, but we believe in our, our safety protocols that our staff have put in place. And so we need to live by those.
Okay, and.
I agree. I think we should do all the steps needed so that we can, um, have a meeting in public. I think we just need to be clear with the community, and I guess when I read all the rules, um. Uh, uh, one of my questions is, let's say, you know, we have our, our boardroom, and it has a capacity of X people. That fit within the, the, the rules of six feet apart, and that works, but now we have more than that people come in. And so we use a couple of other rooms as overflow. What, what happens when we run out of all the space if more people came? And I think I'm really asking this, cause when I read it, it sounds to me like we actually have to stop our meeting, because we cannot have more people. In the space than fit within the rules. And that may just be something we run into if a lot of people come. That is something we share with our community. Our space can only hold so many people, and that becomes our limitation to holding in person. Board meetings, and we would still have the remote option for people to be able to join us in that avenue. Um, so that, that's my one technical question about how things work.
Well, I did, um, I, I did have, uh, we've been having some conversations around the office director more. Related to how we might do that. I don't know if, I know Stephen Collins is kind of been our guy, all, all, uh, all powerful Zoom. Uh, manager, and I know that Diane and Stephen had some conversations. I do believe there's a mechanism by which it's doable. Um, and so. Um, we do have to provide that in, that, that opportunity for people to give input, so. Uh, one thing that I had suggested was in the overflow rooms that we would have a computer there, but then it was pointed out to me. We would have to man that computer with a staff person, because if anybody who came up to give input via the Zoom. In that, we then have to disinfect the computer and stuff like that too. So, but I, I don't know, Stephen, did you?
My point wasn't really about that part. I mean, I think for people that. Want to give input, maybe we have a, a method to be able to have people switch rooms. It was more like, once we reach the capacity of all of our overflow rooms. What happens?
But that's so different.
On the meeting.
But that's so different than what we've done before. I mean, we've had meetings where they've filled our boardroom and they have to, they can't.
I'm just trying to make the point that that's our only limitation, is once we fill up all the overflow, that would be the issue we'd run into, and assuming we don't run into that. Then we get to keep going and have our meetings.
Yeah, but Harlan, I think the difference is back in the old days, if the room was full, the room was full. We might put people in an overflow room or something like that. But I don't think there was a rule that we had to actually stop the meeting. If we couldn't accommodate all the people. I may be wrong on that, but I'm, I'm not aware of it. Um, Marty.
I would suggest that we, that we ask the superintendent to maybe contact Wazda to get something very specific on this. Cause I'm not sure, and I'd like them to ask the A G, because I think if it applies to us, it applies to all school boards and all actually city councils. Uh, because they would also be allowed to do this, uh, because. I think that we should be able to say, if we're at capacity. And, and, and outside COVID, if we're at capacity, we are able to shut the doors to any additional people. It's still a public meeting. And the public is there to watch it. And so I don't know why that would change here, that we would suddenly say, there is no limit to our capacity, even though we're extremely limited. In our capacity, and that's kind of what they're saying, is that we now have no limitations to the number of people that can come into the building. Even though it wouldn't be safe. So that doesn't make sense to me. So I think really asking, um, Wazda to push this point with the A G's office for clarity on. What this means, because this is a proclamation from the governor. I don't know, you know, I don't know how much legal thought they've given to it. In this case, because in most communities, they're probably not gonna really worry about hitting capacity. On a normal day, on a normal board meeting, we don't have two hundred and fifty people. In the room. Today, tonight we do, and I think it's great, plus we have another two hundred watching on YouTube. Um, but. I think they wrote the guidelines with it, with the idea of how things normally are where you don't have. Two hundred and fifty people clamoring to be in the room, which only happens rarely. So I think the other thing also is Lake Washington held their board meeting in public yesterday. So it would be good to also work with them and say, how did you do this? What were your? Um, you know, what ended up happening? Cause I heard that there were people that were outside the building. So I think they closed the doors. From what I heard, so. I really think that I, I would like to get in person and not let this inhibit us.
I.
And to be fair, when we do a Zoom meeting, we do cap it at three hundred, and if you don't make that three hundred. You don't get to give quote unquote in person input. You have to email it or whatever, so. In fact, we're, we're more restrictive now. Than we would be if we met in person. I'm sorry, Sydney had her hand up and then Harlan.
Um, so obviously I'm on board with going back in person, the. I, I guess maybe am I reading this differently? What I'm reading, and I'm on page. Uh, it doesn't have page numbers, page three. And it's a question about, um, in the Q and A section, I read it as that. You, you have to have, must be able to do a physical location meeting. Either in a primary meeting location or an overflow physical location. There's a big or in there for me, so I feel like. It's twenty five percent of the boardroom, the doors close. And the rest is online. It's the very top of the third page of the document has an or about the overflow. So I think we maybe have let, I think we're maybe overthinking it a little.
Yeah, I guess I was taking it as. Anybody who wants to attend needs to be able to be either in a primary room, or they could be in an overflow. It doesn't matter. But they need to be let in the door.
No, that's not how I'm, that's not how I'm reading it. I'm reading that there has to be some physical accommodation, either with you. Or in a, or in a overflow section. I'm not, and and would be a very different statement. So I would personally, and we should get the people who wrote it to explain more. But my belief is we should look at twenty five percent of the physical room. Which I think was like one eighty eight, or so I don't know why I remember that sign, but there's a sign on the wall, um. And that that's our physical location, cause we, the, um, administration of overflow rooms and all that is just gonna be on us. Being able to be productive. Um, so I read that as an or, like some, you have to be able to have some in person. Um, and then everything else goes to an online setting.
Harlan.
The other thing to keep in mind is they have to be able to hear the meeting, and they don't have to be able to see the meeting. And so. Right, we've, we've not been doing visual meetings ever prior to COVID. It's all been just. Podcasts, listen to meetings. So, there's not a requirement that we have to visually broadcast the meeting. By video, we're doing that, and we wanna do that, but if that's truly gonna be a limitation. Then we don't broadcast, and we go back to podcasting our meeting, and. So be it. If we have to set up a speaker outside of our building, so anyone who wants to can hear our meeting, then great. But, uh, I don't think that there's an obligation that we have to broadcast it by video, and so I don't want us to get hung up on that. So if that becomes a barrier, then so be it. No Zoom.
Okay, so to me, the most important thing is we can't limit. How we take public input. So we have to be able to take public input in person, and we have to be able to take public input remotely. Now, I don't personally know how to do that, but I am going to assume that there is technology that allows us to do that. Um, that's really a Stephen question. I don't know if we've asked him that. Um. Up, and there he is.
If I can just comment, I don't think that's any different than what you're doing now. That's, I don't, there's no fanciness to saying. Hey, in the first section, we're gonna take a certain amount sitting in the room with us, and a certain amount that we unmute them on Zoom. I don't think there's any. Additional complexity to that request. Thank you for everything, Stephen, as always, but.
No problem. You're absolutely correct.
So are we running a Zoom meeting in person? Is that what we're doing?
I would.
Mm-hmm.
That's kind of the one I was anticipating.
Right, we still have a Zoom meeting going that people can come into and give public input.
But we're all in the same room, and do we not have issues with, um, feedback and stuff? Are we all wearing headphones? How does that work?
No, we won't be on the Zoom. We, we, they would be the whole, the whole room, like pointed at us as a video camera. We would be like. One big box. I don't know about that. That's I guess back to Stephen.
Like the legislature does now.
Oh.
You would, you would be in control, Suzanne. You would have the control, so you would, it would all be you, but the rest of us would, would not.
Or we could help.
I, I think what we wanna say is we all wanna do it, and we just need admin to figure out the best way to do it, and we'll do whatever you want us to do.
Yeah, and, and I, we, I wanna be clear too. I, I think. How do I say this? We'll make every effort to be in compliance, because I have an executive limitation that tells me to follow the laws. And we will make every effort to do that, and, but I, I also don't want us to overthink this, because. I believe we can do this, we can be in person, we can host a lot of people. Remember, if they still have the remote option, I. You know, I think one of the, one of the reasons that we get the huge audiences we do is because it's a whole lot easier. To be able to zoom in or watch it on YouTube. Um, that's not to say I don't anticipate bigger than normal crowds for sure. But I think we can do this, and then I guess I would just ask myself, so let's say we try it, and in some way we, there's something is not. Exactly to the letter of the law. We're, you know, I, I don't know what the punishment would be. I mean, clearly, I don't, I don't wanna find out either. But we did reach out. I know Diane had reached out to Riverview to say, cause we'd heard they had an in-person meeting, and. At that time, they said, yeah, we were trying, but then we ended up not doing it that way. So I'm glad to hear Lake Washington did. I didn't. Know that when I talked to their superintendent today, I would have asked him, how did you do it? But we will certainly follow up on that. But there are other boards that have met in person, and so we don't have to be the pioneers on this one. We can figure this out, and. I'm hearing consistently from the board, there is a desire to do this.
So does that mean our next meeting? Our next board meeting?
I would believe so.
And I think we can operationalize it. Um, it shouldn't be a problem.
I think this is really important, because then we need to resume our business, and the first thing that I would encourage us to do is to schedule. Our listening session with the I H S feeder pattern secondary schools, because that got put on hold because of COVID. And then the next step was that to then to, to do a study session with I A executive board. To go over the feedback for all three. Now, it's gonna be disjointed, because what the feedback we hear from this year is gonna be probably not. Not similar to the two previous, uh, listening sessions, but I think all valuable. So. I think that's why it's key that we be able to do this.
And, and Director Gallagher, you're talking about doing it, an in-person meeting with the I H S feeder pattern, which I think we could. Likely schedule into like the, um, the PAC at I H S. You've got a six hundred student capacity. So, yeah, you should, you know, two hundred would, you know, you should have no problem to be able to host something like that in there. And it would be volunteer for those who wanted to come, so.
Okay, I am assuming. We have an S I P on Thursday. I'm assuming we're still doing that remotely.
Yes, I would have to, uh, request that we do that remotely. I, we haven't done any work to prepare to turn that into a live. Event yet.
Um, okay, was there any public input on the Open Public Meetings Act or the board meeting in person? Seeing none. Um, we don't have to take action on that one, so, um. I think we are good to go. And that brings us to homework and grading. Now, um. I don't know if you guys saw, I did send. Something out. I have to find it. Wait, there's, there's history to this. Um. Whoa. Okay, so we started this conversation back in February. And, um, Harlan and I met, and we brought you guys some thoughts. And we were going to follow up on it, and then we closed school, and. Lots of other things happened, and we didn't do anything more. And then again, we discussed it at the October retreat. And we talked about, um, changing around. I think we were taking the, um. The language that was in the student learning environment and dumping that into treatment of people, and then changing the student learning environment. To reflect more of our thoughts around homework and grading. And, um, Harlan and I were supposed to. And, um, Harlan and I were supposed to carry the ball forward on that and I don't believe we did. Um, however, I did draft really preliminary sketchy springboard type language for, um, EL two and I believe it's EL 12. Now I do have in my notes that we had some concerns about all of this. We had concerns that the sub-bullets might be too prescriptive and maybe should be in the value statement instead of in the EL language. We talked about family engagement. Um, Ron actually wanted to check any laws. And I think there was also some concern about checking the CBA and just making sure we weren't treading on toes. And I don't see it here, but I thought somebody made a conversation on actually wanting to get teacher feedback. Um, that's what I have. That's where we left it. Harlan, I don't know if I'm scratching the itch. You and Marnie, um, wanted to bring this up again. So that's what I know. That's, that's the last time we talked about this in terms of policy.
Yeah. So thanks for being willing to put it on the agenda. You know, I know this was initially focused on just sort of like what's our return and then the calendar got added. But I think one of the things that for me was the motivation was the IHS testimonials. And if anyone hasn't read through any of the student testimonials from Isawah High School, it's worth a read. Because I think they're really powerful from our students. And this was work the board was doing long before this. But it was, you know, I think if there's any time, this is the time for us to move forward on this. And I understand there was hesitation pre-pandemic on could we step on toes or, or do whatever? We can't do this. We can't do that. And, you know, we've watched our whole educational delivery system be completely overhauled overnight. So what we can and can't do, I, I, I think is probably not a true statement. So I think it's all about will. And I don't think that we have to necessarily be prescriptive, although in the era of remote learning, maybe we should. We've certainly seen enough students hurting that we need to do something differently because what we're doing right now clearly isn't working. That being said, my prefer pragmatically, we'd be for us to move forward a policy that includes homework and grading. And I wanted to realign EL two and EL 12 because I thought there was things that were student focused or environment focused on, on EL two that didn't really belong in there. And so that's why we sort of did our separation that we did. Um, seems like EL two is more just a sort of systematic compliance related. And EL 12 is more, how do students learn and what is their environment like? So do I think it's ready to move forward tonight? No. But I think that, that we, we need to get there and it needs to be not another year and a half before we revisit this. So I would say we revisit EL 12 every meeting until we have it to completion. Cause that's probably going to be the only way that we actually dedicate time to get it done.
Yeah. And to be clear, what I gave you, which as I said, was a springboard, was literally just taking all the bullet points out of EL 12 and dumping them into EL two. So there's obviously some work, um, that needs to be done there, although that's not really, that's not the critical issue. The critical issue is, um, uh, the homework and the grading. I, um, I have a bigger concern. I know we have a lot of conversations around homework and I'm always disturbed by the fact that, the amount of homework that the kids say they have is different than the amount of homework the parents think they have. And there's a lot of things going on with homework. My biggest concern is around, um, the really hard and fast deadlines of people, you know, if you turn, it's due at four. And if you turn it in at 4:05, you're going to get a big fat zero or you're going to get 50% or whatever. And we keep hearing that so many of our teachers have embraced, um, the new, the new ideas about grading that, um, the district has been talking about for years. But then we always hear from a handful of people that said, no, I turned it in five minutes late. I got nothing. So that's the one that, that really rubs me the wrong way. Um, Marnie, you've got your hand up.
Well, I think for me and, and to your point Suzanne is that, um, there's really a sense that there's not consistency even within a building. There's not consistency even within ninth grade English at this school. And so that's the frustration. I, I had it with my son in his health class. And I'm like, if he'd gotten this health teacher, it would have been a breeze. It would have been, you know, kind of one of those classes that, okay, I'm going to take. So I have a better understanding, but I'm not worried about it for my GPA to, you know, we're on a subject about mental health and your entire class is in, is a detriment to his mental health. And failing, failing health class. I shouldn't have to worry about failing health class. And oh, by the way, they had this huge requirement for, um, community service. Like that's in no other health class in the entire school district. Why is my son suddenly having to do 15 hours of community service?
Actually, we had that at Skyline too, but it depended on which teacher you had. So I feel your.
So for me, that inconsistency and never knowing like, hopefully I get this teacher because otherwise this is going to happen. And it's not even about hopefully understanding that class. Oh, this class is harder. That's why you get more homework. Um, and then for me, the other is that, um, what is the purpose of the homework? And I think for some it's like, okay, what is the end result that you're expecting? What is the piece of mastery? So I love the wording in there where it's like homework um, is about student mastery of the subject. And that really is, if we talk about grades and homework, all melding to this understanding of mastery of the subject, then, um, then homework should be meaningfully applying towards that. And if it is therefore applying towards that, then you'll want the student to complete it. And setting a deadline, which makes it meaningless if I don't, if I turn it in late, it becomes meaningless. Then you're just not then, there must, it must not have value because you're giving an actual reason for the student to not complete it if they don't complete it on time. So if it's meaningful, you want to encourage the completion of it. So I think it's the inconsistency now that we, we do have, um, teachers that have been like, I'm going to, I am embracing whatever we've been talking about with homework, several opportunities to meet mastery. Um, if we're going to give an assignment, there's openness about how you accomplish the assignment, you know, rather than saying you have to write an essay in a history class. You may give them five different ways to be able to show their understanding of that material. And some of them have embraced it and it has increased their love of the craft. And then others are like, this is what I'm doing. This is what I've always done. This is what I think works and I'm not moving. And that to me is the part that how long have we waited and we've been patient and we've piloted? When do we take the next step? And I think this year, actually last year, a year ago, less than, you know, 11 months ago, we were talking about giving students grace. And I feel like then September came and we checked that out the window. And it's at what point can we look at students and how long we've been doing this? And where's the grace? So I don't know if that takes board action, but our students are pleading with us. And for some, they're like, yeah, this level of homework's fine. My teachers are fine. And then others are like, they're drowning and you can tell in your grade book if your child is drowning.
Um, Sydney, then Harlan.
Uh, so I, I, you know, I certainly agree with you, Marnie, on the consistency point. I think my vantage point in the consistency is our, is what to me appears to be an inability to look at consistency from the student perspective. I think we probably do a better job of doing it from a course perspective, like ninth grade in a certain subject. But it is the variability and any one student's experience that I think we're not looking at. And you have individual students that have, are, are experiencing their six, seven, eight classes. E- each individual class vary differently. And the level of additional anxiety, like it was to your point about a year ago. A year ago, we were talking about the inconsistency in platform. We were having people access and how we needed to get that under, under control because there was a level of anxiety and consistency and inability to navigate. And as I look at the, the uneven experience, you know, particularly my own children have across classes, forget that it's the same subject, just literally saying, how does a, you know, how does a freshman experience this? I think we, we're not doing it all. And I think why I say that is because, and maybe for very good reason, but what's very interesting is having an IHS student. I think that the reaction to some of that feedback Harlan is talking about was to, was to release on many deadlines. And so teacher after teacher was just like, okay, we need to pull back. We need to give you some more grace. But they all pulled back to the exact same deadline. So it was illogical to me. I was like, so we're trying to give them a, an, a consistent experience that helped them stagger out what's asked of them. And I know it's of best intent, but if you all pull back the exact same two weeks on the exact same work, it just is, you know, whatever, moving the, the bubble down the snake or whatever the weird analogy that's going through my head is. And, and it's, and that is saying, I, you know, I want to relieve the pressure as the adult. I have to do something different, but not taking into account, okay, how will the student experience what I'm doing? Now, mind you, my whole graduate studies is in how humans interact with different technologies and interfaces. So it's important to me, but the perspective I think we're really missing is, is, is not what we want to do from ninth grade English consistently across the system. I think that's one step. The most important thing is how do we want our, our 11th grader or our sixth grader or whoever to experience their whole day and their whole experience with us and what's asked of them. And that's why I think we've got the perspective a bit wrong.
Harlan.
It's really about engagement. And, you know, I didn't really experience this as an elementary parent, but certainly as a secondary parent. Trying to lower my hand. Being in Pine Lake for the past, you know, almost two years, I get to really see and experience those inequities. And for me, this is both an engagement and an equity issue. And we've been very consistent about equating, how do we build equity into our system? And when I see what has been seen and we talked about it, and for me, it was all theoretical for a long time. And Marnie was very clear about how important this was and me having little kids like in kindergarten. Like you, you don't see and experience this, but now that I have in Pine Lake, I get to see the inequities that are experienced, not just in my household, but across departments or across grade levels. And it's really hard for our students to understand what it is they need to do, especially in this remote environment. And then for them to be tuning out, losing engagement already earliest on in middle school because of certain grading practices or homework policies, that's on us. Like that's something that is our responsibility that we can control. And for, for me to see that at the highest level of our high schools, which they are working through and they're soon going to be in the workforce and starting families and doing all that. We want high school and even in spite of COVID and remote learning to have been a positive experience for them. That's the one part that we can control is yeah, educational delivery is different this year, but it still can be a positive impact on them. And that's not at all what I was really getting from those testimonials. So I think to Sydney's point, we do have to step back and say, what is the goal and purpose of what we're trying to do? Just from a education practice period. And then our policies and practices need to align to that. And so there may have been discomfort by this board and this administration to move something like this forward. Five years ago, two years ago, I think remote has brought this to a boiling point to say enough is enough. We've heard very clearly from our very articulate students, which we've been hearing from a handful of families over the years very consistently, that what we're doing isn't working. So we need to do this. And this is going to be like our equity policy where the superintendent interpretation is going to be as critical as these few words that we've listed. Cause I'm going to want to know what he's thinking. Because we all know what we're thinking and we've had lots of retreat conversation on like no zeros. Do average, average is really a good representation of mastery, like those types of things. That's like, we give very broad language. I don't think it's prescriptive at all. But I am going to want to hear from our superintendent, not necessarily tonight, but like what, what that interpretation is. Because I think we have a very clear picture about what we mean when we think about equitable homework and grading practices. And I, I, I don't know if I necessarily still agree that they're tied together, but I see how homework and grading are linked. I, I do see that. Um, I just haven't had the personal experience of that.
Anyone else?
So, so I guess what is our to do tonight? Is it just to structure how we want to continue the conversation? Or I guess that's where I feel like I'm at with it. What's the structured path forward? Or is there some specific step or action we want to take in tonight's conversation?
Yeah. I mean, I think the key thing is this, this is one of those places where we can very easily step on administrators' toes. We don't, we don't tell them what to do, but we can create a policy. So, um, yeah, I'm not exactly sure what we want our takeaway to be. Other than probably we need somebody to sit down and look at what we have. And, um, because this is really, this is rough. So we need a subcommittee or something like that to, um, go over this. I don't know if we want, well, I don't know.
President Weaver, I will say, um, thank you for resurrecting the work that was done over a year ago. That was very helpful for me, um, to be able to go back and read and look at the work. Um, and then look at your springboard, if you will, on, on EL 12. And I don't disagree with, um, Director Gallager that, um, the, as it's in the draft that you provided us with, it's language that's mostly pulled right out of our current, uh, language for, um, guidance on, um, grading and homework as well. So it is relatively broad. So I, I agree that it's the interpretation that would be critical. And, um, you know, the board has to accept an interpretation as well as we, as we contemplate going forward and, and monitoring. It might take a, you know, there might be, we, it may take a little bit on, um, on this particular one. Uh, when and if the board decides on, um, their specific language that they want in the EL. So I will tell you that, um, I did go back and read our, our current policy and our, uh, what, what we currently say on this topic. And again, it's not that different than the language that, that you're, that was in your, your draft here as well. So in that regard, I think we, we kind of have identified what we all believe are, are appropriate and even best practices. I think the challenge always comes down to how do we, how do we get everybody consistently following, uh, those best practices? So, um, I think, you know, as the board moves forward, uh, we're ready. I, I know the team and I, we talk about this quite a bit. It is a, a challenging area. I also, and, and this is not a comprehensive review or anything, but I went through the CBA as well. Cause I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't anything that would be, I don't see anything that would be a violation of the CBA. And what, what, at least in, uh, the board talked about last year and was in your proposal. I would clearly be working closely with my staff, um, when the board does decide on language uh, related to that interpretation. And, and, uh, you know, all I can promise is I'll just be forthright and honest with you about if I think there's a problem or if we're headed down a road that's going to be problematic. But, um, you know, certainly having been in public education for over 30 years, I've heard some of the concerns. You know, I have experienced them as a parent as well, not in this district, but in a neighboring district. And then lastly, I would say, um, you know, some of the grading practices that I encountered. And I don't mean this to sound as harsh as, as it is, because you know, I, I'm a, I'm a Husky fan, but boy, I. But boy, I, I encountered some really terrible grading practices in my higher ed experience. So we, we need to do better than what, what I experienced. And a lot of it came down to that continuity and consistency from one professor to another or one TA to another. So I understand the frustrations there too. I've experienced them firsthand as a student as well.
Um, Anne and then Marnie.
Um, well, hearing you say that, that, you know, the language isn't that far out of what we already have or where you were looking. But yet we don't get the results we want. So how will, what language we put here, what really matters is the language that we put, that the practice down with the students is the thing that's actually changed. And I think too, um, I mean, I know this, this does end up in an EL, but then we monitor it. But then we always end up looking at, well, what's the case for most people, right? But what's really gonna matter in this is not really the experience of most people, but the experience of those that are challenged by this. Um, and how do, how are we gonna be able to get at that? Um, I think that will be a challenge we'll have to work on.
Marnie.
Um, I agree. I think that's a great perspective, uh, Anne, is, is how will we get that, you know? The exceptions to the rule, how will we ever know there was exceptions if we're not looking for them? How, so how do we actively find them? Um, I did wanna draw our attention to actually what I was reading through, um, which EL, with the EL 14, which is our instructional programs. And one of the things it has there is ensure that all instructional programs, including both content and practice, are uniformly implemented, regularly monitored and modified as necessary to assure the continuing effectiveness. So I guess there was interest on what could we do now? And the board doesn't have to give any directions for what we do now, cause it's already there. And I think that, I think what we're talking about and why this is coming up is that there's a real sense that right now there needs to probably be a look at how uniform are our practices. And, um, especially is this a time in which perhaps we need to modify what we're currently doing to assure that we're continuing our effectiveness with students?
We just, uh, anchor on EL 15 or, or whatever it was, I lost it. To say, for a pathway forward, is there any language that people have heartburn about? I guess I'd be curious on that, meaning, I guess, since we've talked about it over two retreats, over a two-year time period. Is there really, and now hearing from our superintendent that the language is broad. And what I'm hearing from him is that it's broad enough and it isn't something that is gonna imme- immediately cause any sort of problems. Does it need any more working before we move it forward into a formal pathway for approval?
So you asked about heartburn. I don't know if this rises to the level of heartburn, but I think, I think the piece that I, I'm, I feel like we're want, we're, we're wanting, or at least I'm wanting, but I'm not seeing, I'm looking at, uh, EL 14 right now. And maybe I'm skimming too fast, but what's interesting is we say that this input cycle, the input cycle is around the actual instructional programs and textbooks. I don't know that we have an established input cycle for the, for the, to get the voice, Harlan, to your point about the, um, that student piece, but to get that voice consistently of whether it's actually work, uh, the grading practices or the homework practices are are working effective, et cetera. Here, at least in my skimming, it's more about the curric- feedback on what the curriculum is, which is a different, which is a different beast than I think we're, we're talking about here. So I do think there's maybe something else. That's not, that's not, we're not getting at.
Well, and I think the reason I brought it up is because oftentimes homework is considered as part of the curriculum. Like, you know, I teach this from this book, this is the unit, and here's what activity. So the acti- homework is an activity around that. So I think that's why I brought it up. Like, there's still, the superintendent can give direction to his staff now based on this. It's, it's what I'm saying with that.
No, I, I'm, I'm agreeing with you. It's just interesting in reading it that maybe about the, saying the unsaid words. That in this is also the expectation that those are specific things we're talking about, homework, grading practices, cause to the untrained eye, it really is more like, what are the chapters? When I read this, it could be more like, what are the chapters of the content versus some of the other things you just mentioned?
And, and I, I agree with what Director Marlowe is saying. Like, I wanna have that conversation about what do we do now? I just wanna separate that, cause I have lots of thoughts about that, but I just wanna not lose this. That, so maybe then if we added under, um, section, sorry.
And I was in, I was in agreement with what you both were saying. It was just interesting as I read it after the conversation, like, oh.
But I, but to your point, maybe under, under number one, we had another bullet that says, uh, solicit regular feedback from stakeholders, including students and staff or something that, you know. So we can actually ensure that we have that feedback loop going. And then it's up to the superintendent to decide regular, regular to me doesn't mean necessarily yearly, that would be burdensome, but some sort of, you know, process by which that there is that feedback part.
Although when we get to the although when we get to the secondary, I don't know that there's not an opportunity to do, you know, some type of self-evaluation like this, you know, what, what? Just leave in check marks, like what was this homework meaningful? Did I, you know, have too much trouble doing that? And, and as we utilize technology, is there a way to utilize technology for a student to give feedback? Like, you know, I, I found this subject was not inspirational and was, was boring or, or whatever it is for us to just be able to start to hear and see through the eyes of students. And I think that we've been missing that.
Yeah, I think, um, that, that's something I've never seen, our teachers asking for feedback on the homework. You know, um, did you value the homework? Did you learn something from the homework? How long did this homework take? Because there's great variability in how long homework takes between different students. And do pe- you know, how, how do teachers get that feedback? Um, I've never seen them ask, so, but I think there could be a lot of valuable information that they could glean from their students on the homework they're going, doing. And, and the separation of the work that is classroom work that students leave and still need to do versus homework that's separately assigned. I think the teachers could get a lot of feedback from students about it.
I will say, Director Moore, I, I have seen some ways that teachers have solicited feedback like that, like what you're describing. And actually using tech, technology tools as well to do it. However, I, I can't say that that's a widespread practice. It's probably more the exception than it is the rule. I think I've seen more of it in the last five or six years since, you know, we brought in Guski and Myron Dewick. And teachers have been experimenting with, uh, different ways of assessing their student learning and, and monitoring and, and what their homework practices are. I, I think kind of to an earlier point from Director Mullings too, as it related to, um, EL 14, that does read more holistically around instructional program and doesn't tend to get as granular as the exact, um, grading procedure or the homework procedure. Um, and even to those points, uh, I don't typically as a system, we haven't gotten that prescriptive with teachers in the past. Um, but I, I, you know, I think that that lack of, guidance or specificity and the guidance we give is partly why we see some of the inconsistencies that you're all talking about. I can tell you as a classroom teacher, um, I was never, when I earned my certificate, and this is true of, uh, university prep programs all over the, the country back in the day, there wasn't even a classes on assessment. I mean, grading was, you, you got your first job and you asked the person next to you. So how do you all grade? And, you know, most of it was very much driven by percentages. And many of the things that we've been trying to undo, if you will, through our, our, uh, grading and homework practices, um, professional development that a lot of our teachers have leaned into. Um, but the desire to go there and myself and the staff will be ready to, to implement and help guide the conversation in any way we can. Um, you know, there, we, we are having conversations with educators too. I mean, that's been a big part of the professional development. Um, but you know, in some ways, I think those efforts that we've done, that have really changed grading practices and homework practices for a lot of teachers have almost exacerbated the problem a bit too. Because if you're not being innovative and doing that work, you're really standing out. And, you know, if you're talking about a secondary teacher, um, it may only be, you know, there may only be a few teachers in, 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 in a school that just really are having a struggle to let go of their traditional grading practices. Maybe firmly believe in them as well. But, you know, you see a lot of kids when you're a secondary teacher. So a couple of teachers, you, you've now impacted maybe 300 students. So I think there's a lot at play here. I, I'm not gonna lie, it's a delicate area for me even as an educator to go. And, uh, again, we're talking about, um, because right now what you have is a regulation around homework. You don't have a policy. You'd be moving it into the policy arena by putting it into, um, an executive limitation. Um, which, you know, that's the appropriate place for it to be, particularly with a policy governance board. So, um, uh, those are just some thoughts that I have. I know there's no great insight there, but, um, just some thoughts as I listen to the conversation.
And at least from everything that I've gone to, from the National School Board Association, annual meetings to statewide ones. If we're not talking about it at a policy level, then we can't expect the system to, to change. So.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would agree, Dr. Gallinger, that's, you're the leaders. And, you know, I certainly wanna provide you whatever guidance or insight I, I can, um, as well. But you, you know, you read student testimonials, you have conversations with, you've all had students in the system. So, um, you bring a lot to this conversation, I know.
Okay, so I think at this point, um, I'm gonna ask for any public input. And then I think we need to figure out what, where we wanna go from here. Does that sound, I see one nodding. Okay. So is there anyone who wants to give public input on the topic of homework and grading? Um, I've got two hands. Um, Carrie Keifer.
Hi. I apologize, I had zero intention of speaking tonight. So anyway, um, I just wanted to say, I, I so appreciate that you guys are having this conversation. It is so, so important. I have two high school students at Isqwa and I, there is such a nuance here between we're talking about the consistency, which is a huge issue, and I'm totally on board with that. That's a huge issue even in normal times. Um, the teacher you get, it, it's kind of the luck of the draw in a lot of circumstances. I want to be very clear that what these kids are staying, saying, and Harlan, you talked about these testimonials. And I really hope that every single person at the district and on this board has seen those testimonials. They're talking about the busy work and they're talking about this is unprecedented. What they're, these kids are older, they've been in high school for years. It's like nothing they've ever had before. You have to understand the difference between not really being motivated to work and this is really hard and this isn't going well for me, cause that's a real thing too. But if this is what we have, the busy work is out of control at the high school level. I can only speak to the high school level. But I have a junior who's had, you know, two, and two years of classes in normal times and, and he's never experienced anything like this. And so if there's a resolution that can be made, we've talked to the principal, she's been so great. She knows, she understands, and I know multiple people have talked to her about it, the hands are tied. She has no say. We talked about trying to adjust the grading scale to try to give these kids grace. Because the teachers have been great in, in not making things due on us, but they've given them a lot of grace and I do appreciate that. But number one, that's not teaching them to meet a deadline, which is a whole other problem. But it's, it's creating, it's still busy work that they still have to get done. And whether it's today or tomorrow or next week, it's stressing them out to no end. So I hope that you all understand the nuance between the busy work and the deadlines. It's just super important.
Okay, thank you. Um, I thought I had another one. Oh, I'm sorry, Camille Wright. Sometimes I have to do this and sometimes I don't. There you go.
Hi, yes, I, um, I wasn't going to speak on this either, but I had seen that it was on the agenda. And, um, I'm vocalizing for myself as a teacher in the middle school level. So I'm not going to speak for anybody else, but I just wanted to point, make some points out very clear with us with regards, um, with teachers and me specifically. You know, we've, we've all been thrown into this, this whole situation. We've had to adjust our, um, our curriculum, we've adjusted our grading. There are, we have made many accommodations for our students. Um, we at the middle school have, um, a schedule that is absolutely crazy for our kids to think that they can be online for two hours in one class period is just, I mean, uh, it, it tires me out. And so we've been kind of told, try not to stay online for the whole entire two hours. But then when we let them off and we ask them to do work asynchronously, it doesn't get done sometimes. And so we're in a catch 22 sometimes with that. I don't give busy work. I teach math and I teach cooking. And I don't give busy work. I give work that reflects what I've taught them. I don't know if they know it, because half the time I can't see them on their, on their monitors. There's no, nobody doing, showing me that they're doing their work because we can't require them to turn on their videos. So homework for me is my, um, guide and my assessment as to what they're getting done. And I grade everything at the same level, whether it be an assessment or it be homework. Because I don't know if they're actually doing the assessment on their own or if they have somebody doing it for them. So I want you to know that, you know, there are things that we are doing differently as teachers. We are giving leeway to a lot of our students. I don't know how it is for other teachers and, and at other levels. But not everybody is being as strict as, as you're hearing Harlan or, um, that we're giving way too much work. All the work that I give can be done in that two-hour class period. I just choose to let my kids do it on their own time sometimes. So that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, where do we wanna go from here?
Yeah, I'll go back to the, are, is there heartburn about any particular part of, of EL 12? Because if there's not, I think we should put on a pathway for approval. And then EL 2 needs to be revisited separately, in my opinion.
I think if you can integrate the changes that Sydney was talking about, where at some point there's student reflection. Um, I think that would be important. Otherwise, no, I don't have any heartburn about it.
I'm sorry, so I'm not sure I caught, um, I caught the one suggestion about soliciting feedback from stakeholders, but I'm not sure I caught what Sydney was talking about.
Well, that, that includes students.
Oh, okay. So that, that is the same thing. Okay.
Yeah, and I, and that it is, I guess, more explicit about feedback on what? That it's not just the, I guess, textbook and content, but also the homework and other components.
Like the learning.
Yeah.
Well, that would be E.
That was a clarification I had, um, because as I, you've got homework and you That was a clarification I had, um, because as I, you've got homework and you have grading practices. Are you wanting to have a statement about soliciting feedback on and both of those topics?
Uh, at least for me, I think on the grading practices, it's about moving to the consistency part that's already outlined. And the feedback was on, um, well, the feedback was on the homework, my perspective.
I would agree.
So I had a a note in here that was just bracketed where we talked about homework practices. Should we require that homework not be a significant part of the grade? That was the question.
I think that's more pro- proscriptive than I would be comfortable with.
Okay.
Agreed, that's an interpretation thing.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, well, let me go back through it, um, since I'm the one who drafted it. And um, make sure that, that it still says what I thought it said. Um, and add that point on the homework. And then I will send out a cleaned up draft to you all. And um, we can put it on the agenda um for a first read. Okay.
Do we now have a spent a moment to talk about what Director Murado brought up about? Is that gonna be, then we expect that to be addressed immediately? Or is it, does there need be further conversation? And this is, this is the tricky part about being policy governance board. Where how this works and how this dance happens, but we're hearing a lot of feedback. And it's not like we're hearing balanced feedback, this is very consistent feedback about the amount of workload that students are getting. And if we look at the student engagement data, and sure, is there some discrepancy between student and parents? Maybe, but we saw through our middle schools that four of the middle schools, not five, but only four of them. There was concern about that more parents than non-inconsistent with the student data believe that students were provided to more homework than they should be. And so I guess my question and for the board or globally for the superintendent is, what do we do when we get that kind of data? Like, we asked for that data to be gathered and now we have the data. And we're not to the end of the year, so we do have another trimester for middle schools. And we're, you know, almost a full semester for second for our high schools. But we don't want any, we don't want anything detrimental to happen to our students anymore than than is already happening to them. So what can we do to not cause any more harm as a system? And I don't know if that, if that is the point that Director Murado, Murado was making or not, I'll let her interject.
I think that's, that's really what can we do, because we're hearing from students and we're hearing from families. And um, like you said, I mean, it's, it's concerning what that equates to for a student during a pandemic. So we're taking something that has been an issue with some families and some students. We've increased the number of students who feel impacted by this. Oh, and we've added all of the things about the isolation, the lack of drive of being caring about anything, because that's really a sign of depression right there. And so what do you do when all of that is happening to a student while still trying to facilitate learning? And and I recognize, I I love that Ms. Wright spoke. Because I truly believe that there are teachers out there that are really sensing that. And so how do you make that uniform this year? And I'm, and I don't have an answer, I just know that a need has been declared and I don't know what the district is doing about it.
And I know this is real, because I see it in my day job, like, I've never seen anything like this. The amount of impacted adolescents we're seeing that come in, in an emergency is is pretty remarkable in a not good way.
I did wanna just remind folks that we, we had a grading work group that worked over the summer as part of our, all the various work groups we had. Um, and it was specific to grading during COVID nineteen and actually produced guidance um, that I think if you review the guidance, it it's actually, it was good, sound advice. Of course, one of the real challenges is, you know, we, we can provide good advice and um what we believe would be the best practices. And sometimes the challenge comes down to getting, you know, fourteen hundred employees to agree with that and, you know, follow that guidance. Um, that, that is, you know, teaching i- is a bit of a unique profession in that way. You know, you, you, you do feel somewhat isolated. I think we've gotten a lot better over the last few decades of breaking down some of the isolation um, that teachers experienced out in kind of their own world of their classroom. And basically doing their own practices, doing what they want. Um, some because they learned it, um, some because, yeah, because um, you know, maybe they learned it from a colleague or through their preparation programs. Or as I said, they just gleaned it from a neighbor when they came into work in a particular building or department. Um, but that is in part, part of the challenge. I mean, we can give great advice and encourage and, you know, ultimately use the evaluation process and everything. Um, but having a good plan and giving good guidance and documenting it the way that we did. I'm holding up the the document from the work group, which they did some really nice work. Um, it just unfortunately doesn't mean that that is what everybody's gonna fall in line and start doing. So we, you know, we've got, obviously, that's our management work that we have to do. But there was good advice given. Um, you know, if you read through that document, um, it, it basically talks about returning, you know, to sound grading principles. And I know that a number of the board have sat in on professional development from folks like Myron Duick and Guski. And, you know, I think we're, and I, and I do believe that many, many teachers are implementing those better practices. And way more teachers across our system are providing multiple opportunities for um students to demonstrate mastery and so forth. But at the end of the day, clearly, um, from the voice of our students and families, w- we still have work to do for sure on this front, we hear it. Um, this is a little bit of that turning ship, I think, Director Murado, that you referenced earlier in our earlier discussion. These are, these are instructional practices that get ingrained in in folks. And, you know, they're not gonna just change because I come out and say, well, I think it would be better if you did it this way. We have to educate um our staff and bring them along. So back at the very beginning of this work, we said this was not the kind of work that was easy to mandate. You, you need to change the phil-, you, people need to change philosophically how they think about it. And I think there's been tremendous movement. But then, you know, as so many things, COVID has just really disrupted and uh us. And it disrupted the board and our work here to finish this work that we started over a year ago. But it's been more disruptive to the practices of teachers out there. And I think a lot of them are very well-intended, trying to do the right thing um, and figure this out in this new weird teaching environment. Um, and sometimes, sometimes you get it right and sometimes you don't. So those are, again, are just observations. But um, you know, we're, we're prepared to move forward and I'm prepared to move forward eh, um, when and if the board adopts new language. And then my task, the task incumbent upon me is to figure out how to take that policy and make it come alive out there and so that it, it does have the effect that you all want it to have on students. Um, I would also remind us, just lastly, the last thing I'll say, there are opportunity cost every decision we make. And I think partly the, what we're experiencing in the stress that has been exacerbated by the pandemic. But let's be honest, it was in our system before the pandemic ever hit. Um, in part, because we are a very successful community. We are a very successful um school system with very high expectations. And we love to show our data that shows that our students matriculate on into four-year college at some of the highest rates probably of just about any public school system around. And they're successful when they get there. And I think, you know, we, we've kind of just been building this culture of success. And then every now and then I think we need to just pause and say, okay, at what cost? Um, is it on the mental health of our students? Is it the, uh, you know, and and it lands differently on every, on, on, on families and kids too. But so there's a lot going on in this conversation. So I I appreciate that the board is re-engaging on it, I think it is, it's important work. Um, but there will be some challenges there. Um, those are just some observations that I have from listening to your dialogue here tonight.
Well, and to your point on, we are a successful district. Um, I still remember back when uh Donna Hood was principal at Skyline. She said, maybe we have to talk a little bit about what successful means. Maybe we have to shift that definition. Um, one of the things that's really, really stuck with me. Um, because, you know, at the time, Skyline, well, Skyline's always been very high achieving. But, but our limited definition of academic success was leaving out a lot of kids who were successful, but in different ways. So, and Sydney, I'm sorry, I know you've been mad.
Yeah, I think for me, one of the things, this, one of the things that would be helpful, and maybe this is, um, I've been through monitoring more now and have a better sense of how they go. One of the things that might actually be helpful for me is we look at some of these, um, the ends and the ELs is to actually look at the maturity, um, the maturity progress of them. So like, where are we from having the concept of having this? I'll use to stay on the grading practices, because we are introducing the concept, training people about them, having them adopt to having full consistency. And it may just be, I think, on some of our, some of our way we talk about um monitoring is, is get to some language we can, we can agree to or use in a standard way that says, here's what we think, we, we're making these as statements of what's important and critical to us in the system. But there's probably an easier way, easier, at least a more um easily identifiable way to say, how far are we along that continuum for this topic? And so when I think about the grading practices, it is an interesting point to say, okay, we introduce what we want to have happen. We developed a program and introduced people. We have, um, we, you know, we have practice happening. But there's always that last mile, which is to get to the consistency, the hundred percent, the full, the ingrained in in the organization. And I think that uh 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 some sort of construct that we could land on like that, I think would be very helpful. And just saying, so we get to the what's next. And some of these, some of the ELs will be in different, they'll all be in different places, but we can get more clear on. And, you know, in this one, we feel like we have the idea, we've built a base for it and we have some acting. It's about last mile, or in some other cases, we might be much more at the beginning. If you look at our equity work, like, we might, we might bring ourselves back a little bit into how long we, that's into our DNA as an organization. But I think for me, that would be much more helpful, because then we're really talking about um, next steps, change management, practices we're putting in place as it relates to where we are and the maturity of a particular item. And I think it, it would just help rally us around um, our, one, our common understanding. And then what tools in our toolkit are we, are we using next? Does that make sense?
I think that's actually really interesting, because, you know, when you go back to the beginning of policy governance and I think Ron and I are the only ones who actually do that. Um, you know, the early ELs were things we were already doing. They were things like, well, you're gonna obey the law, you're gonna do budgeting, you're gonna do financial planning. You're gonna have safe buildings that are insured. I mean, they were, they were sort of best practices and we're already doing them. But it's really important to the board to know that we're, we're continuing to do them. You start looking at the more recent ELs like equity. And, and those are different, those are shifts. Those are, the organization kind of really hasn't been doing this. Or maybe they have, but it's not real formal or we're not doing it real well. And we want to get better, we, we want to turn the ship, we're gonna just kill that analogy to death. Um, and, and so, yeah, it's really interesting. So I would, I would argue that the last probably three or four ELs that are in there are more of a shift. And the early ones are just, yeah, we're doing that stuff, which is why, for the most part, those end up on the consent agenda.
You're, that's a great observation, Suzanne, fourteen, fifteen and sixteen. I think that's kind of where the transition began. And I, you know, we used to kind of jokingly say we do policy governance, we do ISACWA policy governance. But I think there is some truth to that as well. And and I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I, it, it's, I think you're right. I, I would argue we've become more sophisticated in the way that we're doing policy governance. From back, boy, now going back, what, fifteen years ago or whenever it all started.
Okay, well, I will clean this up, I will, um, we'll get ready to put it on the consent agenda. Um, at the consent agenda, I'm sorry, no, just the agenda.
The read.
First read, I'm, I'm tired. Um, I will set it up to be first read on the agenda. And we can talk more about it if we need to talk more about it at that time.
No, that'll, that, thank you for that. And I'm sure that the staff and I will have a very engaging conversation about homework and grading practices too in our next cabinet meeting. Because I know they've all been listening very intently to this conversation.
And in normal times, I would say, and we'll do a work study around it. But every one of our work studies has been exec sessions, so.
Yeah.
And, and I think will continue to be until we get all those little butts in chairs.
It's funny how none of the normal work goes away when all the COVID work gets added, isn't it? I'm sure we're all experiencing that in all different aspects of our lives. So I, just an observation, not a complaint.
Okay, well, we're only an hour late, yay. Um, I think this has been a really productive meeting, but I thank you all. It's yet another meeting that wasn't on your schedule, so thank you very much. And um with that, unless there's anything else for the good of the order, Josh just popped on. Was there a reason for that? No, okay.
He's probably just getting ready to go home.
I'm about to gavel us out and then somebody else showed up, so. Um, okay, with that, thank you very much, and this meeting of the Isco School Board is adjourned.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you.